Alrighty, welcome everyone. Alice, can we have a...oh, Alice, you look just like Jack tonight. Can we do a roll call, please? Uh, Freda?
Here.
Marianowski?
Here.
Vandemir?
Here.
Naskin?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Smith? Hall Ruddy?
Here.
Yapidana?
Here.
Alright, we have Quorum. Alrighty, um, recommended action item for next, uh, meeting is the October calendar. Anybody have any thoughts or changes for that?
Can we add, uh, trick-or-treat hours on Friday 31st?
Alright, can we do that, Jack? Can you get that down?
Sure.
Alright, if there's nothing else, we'll make sure we put that on the, uh, as an action item. Um, I know Ben has, uh, had a run downstairs for something, so, in the meantime, oh, there he is now. Alright. Well, I'll give you guys an update of some of the things that are going on while we got Ben putting things together. Um, I don't know if you know that, uh, Lockport Square, that is the, Lockport Square South is that area where, um, it's just kind of where, uh, you know, the Play It Against Sports had been and the, uh, was one of the dollar stores. It has been tough to fill that for the last number of years because the bank owned it, it's been in foreclosure, and they were still asking, you know, $2,008 rent if they're $30 a square foot, which is, uh, pretty outrageous in this economy. The market is generally $15 to $14 a square foot. So, we've recently had new buyers, uh, I met with Brookline Investment Group the other day, so, um, it's under new ownership, which means they are asking $14 a square foot, which is actually the going rate. So, we should see some movement there, um, shortly, which is good news. And obviously, we still have, uh, the Lockport Square on the north side, um, the, everybody from the retail coach to the Janko Group is very optimistic. We expect to go vertical on something, uh, come this spring. So, it's all, all good stuff for moving forward out there. Um, you know, downtown's looking good. I just, Pam just got back from, uh, a meeting with the Roxy Group, as some of you guys know, uh, you know, I've had citizens come to me and ask, "What can we do with the Roxy Theater? Can't we get that open again?" And, um, you know, my motto is, you know, "A voice of change is a voice in charge." Uh, "I'm here to support you, but you need to drive it." So, I got these folks who are interested in the Roxy together and, uh, formed the Roxy Group. They, uh, came up with a business plan, which is what I asked them to do. I took that, once they had it, and I went to Trinity Services, who currently owns the building, and, uh, you know, we had it open for three movies, as, you know, I know Darren was there and some other folks, and it was very fun. It was fun watching families go down there on a, on a Saturday night and, uh, and actually enjoy a movie. Um, so, we tried it for three times to see if it could work, and Trinity is very excited about moving forward. So, um, while most of this was temporary, the marquee that you've seen out there, it's not really a long-term marquee, they, Trinity is ready to, to put some, some energy into cleaning up the building and, and making some more permanent changes inside so that we can actually have events there, movies in the future. So, that's very fun. We're excited about that. Um, the Dreams Building, also, you know, it's actually called the Vols Building, is very close to working out a deal with that with a new buyer, which would be a restaurant with apartments up top, so that's very close to being closed. Um, the empty lot next to that, we've had a, a design group called Atera made some beautiful drawings of what a building would look like. It's, uh, well-designed, fits the architecture of the landscape, they would have retail on the front, they would have, uh, you know, some apartments up top, uh, but they did that on their own, and, uh, you know, we're gonna start making sure that we have that on our own website as we look for investment groups now to actually go in on that. And, uh, Darren had a couple of good leads for us, for people working with Preston, that maybe we could, uh, find some investors to make that happen. But, we've certainly been proactive, having bought a lot, having gotten these designs, uh, created. And, uh, you know, next week, next meeting, I really wanna have a lot of the volunteers come out here. Um, you know, the Summer Art Series and Old Canal Days was almost primarily driven by volunteers, Roxy Group volunteers, uh, Lockport Artist Guild newly-formed volunteers. And, I, I'm a big believer in volunteer organizations. Um, we can only do so much, you know, we can help facilitate an Old Canal Days or a Summer Art Series, but in truth, if we don't have people driving it, um, it's not gonna happen. So, I wanna make sure we have those folks out here next, uh, next meeting for, for recognition. And in the next newsletter too, I really wanna do a call-out for volunteers because, you know, as Dennis pointed out not too long ago, he sees the same 15 people at every event, you know, working their tails off. So, if I can find 50 people in the city of 25,000 to step up and share some of the burden, we can truly make Lockport, you know, the, the best city in the southwest suburbs, hand-down. We have so much potential here to do that. So, we'll continue to work on those things. And even better, you know, I'm watching the downtown businesses get inspired again. They're actually seeing stuff happen, seeing stuff change for the first time, and I'm finding them getting inspired. So, instead of them telling me like they did, you know, a year ago, "Steve, don't even bother, it's been like this for 20 years, it's never gonna change," they're actually excited about seeing the changes and the things that were implemented. And, um, they're actually starting now to implement their own things. Uh, Jackie's Pub and Old Town Cafe, they did a, you know, an outdoor barbecue the other day. I've got, uh, a sweet crawl being organized independently by Hollingsworth Candy and Old Town Cafe, and, um, these are things now that we're not even driving, which is exactly as it should be, right? We helped kinda get the ball rolling with some of the things and initiatives that we're doing. So, um, it's all good, and I'm excited about it. But, uh, alright, Ben, you got all your stuff squared away? Alright, so, we'll move on to, uh, to our meeting here tonight. Uh, first thing is, uh, probably what everybody's here for tonight. Pam, you wanna talk about, uh, your item?
Yes, before I go into specifics about the here and now, um, our attorney, Ron Keniva, will be giving an overview of the history of that property and the zoning.
And Ronald, I have your card, so you'll have a chance to speak here in just a minute.
And I think to help, uh, there is a map, and I'll, I'll just go through the, through the, uh, map area. Uh, and I, I know this was a result of all of the desk and asking, "What about the history of the various properties that are owned by Lockport Investments or are adjacent to Lockport Investments?" And I'll start with the westernmost property on this, on this map, which is, I believe, light blue, and that was zoned industrial, and that actually was zoned industrial, as far as I could tell, in the mid-1960s. And there's kind of a hole in the middle of that, and where that hole was, was the old Lockport Heights Sanitary District. And the Lockport Heights Sanitary District Treatment Plant was located there, and obviously, the treatment plant serviced, uh, the Lockport Heights subdivision, which is just, just north of that light blue area and some other areas. And Lockport Heights subdivision, some of you may be in, been there in Lockport Heights subdivision, but that was also planted in the, in the mid-1960s. And, so, the, the surrounding area, and because it was surrounded, it surrounded a treatment plant, no doubt, that was the reason probably why, uh, that area was zoned industrial, but it has been in the city of Lockport, uh, for quite, uh, some period of time. The Lockport Heights, uh, Treatment Plant was, uh, abandoned in 2002, part of our, uh, merger and, and getting, uh, the management of Lockport Heights and Bonnie Bray. That was part of the agreement. It was kind of antiquated plant, uh, and we upgraded the, uh, Bonnie Bray Treatment Plant as a result of that. And, let's go to the property essentially, uh, in blue that, that strides the, uh, western section of the Tollway and I-355. There is, this property was owned by Lockport Investments, and it was a part, uh, of a major, uh, that was half of the property owned by Lockport Investments. On the east side of the Tollway, they also owned, uh, what is now MLRP, that, that development that's going forward, but they bought this in, in 2001. In 2001, uh, it was one entire piece. There wasn't a Tollway running through there, it was a, an entire parcel. 2001, they bought the property, uh, Tollway also acquired that, uh, property that bisects, uh, the two areas, and that's where I-355, uh, came about. It, it was annexed to the city of Lockport in 2001, annexed, uh, annexed as, uh, as essentially what we referred to as Office O2, but our Office O2 back in 2001 allowed uses such as MR is using today, warehouses. So, even though it says O2, uh, in, in 2001, it, that included warehouses, and, uh, the annexation agreement, uh, grandfathered in that use. Uh, and as you know, uh, approximately 2008, the eastern portion of that property was sold to MLRP, and they're presently, uh, developing it. As far as the piece in question tonight, uh, in the middle, which is the dark green, and then in the southern section is the lighter green, that's, was once known as the Rama Property. And about the southern, I don't know, five, five acres of the property is presently zoned ER in the city of Lockport. ER is a state residential, it was zoned a state residential, uh, primarily because it's our most restrictive use. And so, when we annexed it, we were going to make sure that, you know, we had some ability, uh, to rezone it the way we would like. That was, that was just for purposes of continuity, uh, for the annexation of the other parcels of property of a Lockport Investment that were on, uh, included the Tollway property originally. And the, the remaining property, uh, that's zoned, uh, possibly zoned tonight, is the, the rest of the Rama Property, um, that they, they, being Lockport Investment, purchased that in 2008. So, the Tollway came in about in November of 2007. So, until that, there was really no Tollway. And of course, Creekside came in, Creekside Estates, uh, was planted in 2004, and I think the first certificate of occupancy was 2005. So, that gives you a little brief history of the surrounding uses.
Alright, thanks, Ron. Uh, Darren has asked me for a moment, do you wanna?
I, I just wanna add one more history thing, uh, to this. Um, I got this information, but I wanted to know was the history of I-355. And, um, so, I'll just read from what I found out here. The original alignment of I-355 was defined in the Chicago Trans, Chicago Area Transportation Study abbreviated CATS, Transportation Plan of April 1962. The plan called for a supplemental system of limited access expressways to be built in the Chicago Metropolitan Area by 1980, and defined corridors where the expressways were to be located. So, um, we, not only is, is the, um, so that's just additional information, the, the, the route for I-355 has been there since 1967.
Make sure you're speaking into the microphone. Very good.
Want me to repeat what I just said? Okay, I'll repeat it. The original alignment of I-355 was defined in the Chicago Area Transportation Study abbreviated CATS, Transportation Plan of April 1962. The plan called for a supplemental system of limited access expressways to be built in Chicago Metropolitan Area by 1980, and defined corridors where the expressways were to be located. So, the defined corridor for the I-355 has been on the books since April of 1962. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Ronald, do you wanna come up and speak for a minute? That way, maybe, uh, questions can be answered as you come up. Ronald, you put a card up here, Mr. Sharletto? Way out there?
I'm relatively new to the Lockport area. We've only been here about seven or eight years.
Ronald, can you just do me a favor? First off, welcome. Can you just say your name and address?
My name is Ron Sharletto, and I'm at 16750 Huntington Drive in Lockport, Creekside Estates, South.
Thank you.
Uh, I attended the zoning board, um, variation meeting, and I was very dis- disappointed because the zoning board disregarded the voice of many of the Lockport residents and approved a zoning request variation in favor of a person or company, uh, that don't even live in Lockport. They live where, um, they're, resided outside in Joliet. So, I was very disappointed that they didn't listen to the people of Lockport. And at the zoning meeting request, a resident mentioned that the next variation request would be for a through street to run through the proposed manufacturing property parallel to Gauger. The zoning board said, "Well, that wasn't part of that request at that time." But you know full well, if the approval goes through, that'll be the next variation request, and it'll probably be approved. Um, I don't know why you need more industrial light manufacturing property when you haven't used or made, implemented the property that you already have. There's a lot of vacant property that is not being used. I don't know why you need more light industrial manufacturing property. Um, a, a few years ago, a Lockport official mentioned something to the effect regarding the improvements that Lockport was making to the downtown area. And they said, "Watch out, Hinsdale, here comes Lockport." Well, I don't know if any of you have been through Hinsdale, but I really think that if you drove through Hinsdale, you would not find very much light industrial manufacturing property. So, I don't think Lockport definitely, if they approved this request, is in a position to compare themselves to Hinsdale. You people make a big deal out of all the Lockport festivals. The Lockport festivals involve people, not companies, not manufacturing facilities. And you have it within your power to name Lockport as an industrial city or as a residential city. So, I hope you choose wisely. Thank you.
Thanks, Ronald. Just one clarification, those festivals are primarily funded by companies, so, that's where we fundraise from, just so you know. Alright, uh, Pam, you wanna go?
Yes. Um, this evening before you, uh, Lockport Investments has submitted petition twofold, one for annexation and one for rezoning of the property. Um, the annexation and rezoning is for 7.05 acres to R1 Single Family Residential, rezoning of nine acres previously annexed into the city in zone DR to R1 Single Family Residential. Um, both the R1 zonings that are proposed here and being requested are similar to the adjacent subdivision Creekside, which is also zoned R1. The final component is a 64.5 acre parcel that's, uh, being requested to be rezoned to M1 Limited Manufacturing. At this time, staff would just like to reiterate that this is only to annex and to rezone, that there are no development plans being considered at this time. And should development plans be generated and submitted to the city, there will be appropriate procedures, including additional public hearings, that will need to be followed before the Plan Commission and then ultimately decision rendered by the City Council. In total, the application covers 80.5 acres. Um, this pro, this rezoning to the R1, um, is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is our I-355 Corridor Master Plan, which also recommends residential for this particular area. The remaining portion, which is being requested for M1, is also in compliance and consistent with the land use recommendations in the comprehensive plan, again, the I-355 Corridor Master Plan. The public hearing for this was held on the rezoning at the August 12th Plan Commission meeting. There were many residents that came out and expressed concerns. Uh, the council did receive draft minutes so that you were well-aware of what the issues and concerns that were raised by the public that evening. The Plan Commission made a recommendation on the zoning request, but they do not review or make a recommendation on the annexation. There are, um, there were, some of I, some of the testimony that I would just like to highlight for the record is that many residents not only expressed concern with the compatibility and questioned the need for more M1 zoning, but also the negative impact that the zoning would have. There was also concern expressed about the preservation of existing trees, the additional noise that would be generated, and any drainage concerns that might result from future development. And just so that the council is aware, even after that public hearing, um, we contacted Will County, because there was some comments also made, that there may have been some trees being taken down from that property. We contacted Will County Land Use Department, and we asked that if they did have any permitting process for removal of trees, that perhaps, you know, they, they are aware of what the situation was with the rezoning on this and the concern for preserving that extensive tree line that currently exists out there. Um, though they don't have any permitting process, they did acknowledge that they would keep that information at hand, and should anything arise, you know, they would make sure that they're, um, attentive to that. Um, after the public hearing, staff did make a recommendation, um, in favor of the requested zoning request, uh, because it was consistent with the comprehensive plan and also met the LaSalle zoning standards, which is what we use to review whether a rezoning of property is appropriate. In addition to that, the Plan Commission by a vote of seven to zero also recommended approval of the rezoning requests. Um, with that being said, this evening, staff would, um, respectfully ask that the council provide direction to place this on the October 15th City Council Agenda for Action.
Alright, and just so everybody understands, 'cause I know, it's the first time you come to a council meeting, you don't understand how this works. Tonight, we're gonna discuss this, and then, but we don't vote on it. It goes to vote in the next council meeting. So, whatever we talk about tonight is where we discuss, and hash things out and listen, and then, uh, um, not to say that this, we haven't been doing this outside of this council chamber, but, um, and then it's next meeting that we would actually vote on it. So, that's what Pam is requesting. Um, I don't mean to insult anybody who knows the procedure, but I just know that when I've sat out there in the past, I'm like, "What's going on?" So, just FYI.
Isn't it going on October 15th?
October vote. Yeah, okay, so, October 15th is when you want it. So, it'll be out, it'll be out for a while, I think it's a 30 days or something like that. So, there's time before it actually gets to vote.
Excuse me, Mayor, what I'd also just like to, um, note is that when I ask for the October 15th, that would be for consideration of the rezoning. Um, the draft annexation agreement, which our attorney and their attorney is working on, um, should be prepared and ready for the September 17th Committee of the Whole Meeting, at which time, again, you would review and discuss the item.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so, why don't we open it up here? Any thoughts?
Yes, quick question. It seems like, uh, some of the residents are concerned, okay, if this measure passes, uh, there's a concern out there, there's additional variations that could come to pass. Is there anything that we could do with the annexation that we're gonna be voting on two weeks from now, that we can make something permanent, at least something that the developer and the residents could agree upon, uh, within the annexation agreement? So, maybe this is a question for, for Ronald.
You know, there, there are a couple of things as pertaining this land. I know that a developer has said at the, at the zoning hearing that, you know, he is not, you know, there was a concern that more trees are, are gonna be cut down. He has made an offer, and it's probably, it's gonna be incorporated in the annexation agreement, that he agrees that no other, he, he will cut no other trees down within this property. Uh, the second, uh, thing, he, as, as pertains this property, has stated, and we're working on the annexation agreement, that, uh, the residential portion of this property, uh, can't be used for, you know, a road for any of the M1 portion of the property. So, those two things we can incorporate. And I, I, I think, and maybe, um, the, the issue also is that he has agreed, and part of our, uh, zoning and, um, code says that this development will come in as a planned unit development. And that, uh, puts more scrutiny on the developer for developmental plan. What that means is the developer has, there has to be another public hearing, and at that public hearing, he's going to show exactly where each building is going to be of his plan, and how does that affect, uh, the adjacent property owners. And that's the time when we can talk about, you know, is there, you know, sufficient screening? Is there sufficient buring? How is the lighting gonna be affected? How is that gonna do, uh, to the neighbors? Now, we can't say, "Oh, by the way, you know, you must, you know, must build, burn, you know, 50 feet in height," but those are the, but, those are the terms that we can talk about. And, and it, it's one thing to talk about these terms when you don't know where these buildings are. It's another thing to talk about these issues when you have the plan of exactly where the buildings are going to be placed. Now, uh, and once that plan is approved, it can't be amended. And what I mean by that, it can't be amended unless we go through the process again. So, many times, you know, the, the developer wants to get it right the first time. He wants an agreement with, with the city the first time, because he doesn't wanna go through this process again. At least, that's been my, uh, observations. So, I, I think that answers your question.
The idea is, um, someone from the association emailed, "Well, what about the idea of a frontage road, uh, to mitigate some of the traffic concerns?" Is that something that would go under the process, under the planned unit development? Or is that something that could be?
Well, but what, you know, we can explore that. I don't know where the frontage road goes or comes from.
Well, you know, and also, once the PUD is discussed, we'll have a better idea of what kind of internal road configuration the developer has in mind, and that can let us know whether or not there, there is a need for a frontage road, and, you know, I know the residents have expressed a concern that they don't wanna see any roads go south to 151st Street, so we wanna make sure they all go north down to 43rd Street, that sort of thing. But I think, we're not gonna really know that for the fifth and a third.
Right, and, and, you know, and that's, obviously, you or the property knows that, and anybody developer coming, coming knows that too. And, and we did, discussed the topography of the land. I mean, you know, I, I think the Planning Commission was quite well-aware of the creeks and the, the areas that have to be protected. You know, on the south side, from, uh, just the terrain of the land, it's gonna be not easy, you know, to put a main road, you know, in that, that blue area, uh, for industrial. And, so, that doesn't mean they won't ask it, but that means that it will be very difficult and costly for them to do that.
Okay. I have, um, I received an email from Michael Gilry, who's the president of the Creekside Estates Community Association, and I would just like to have this filed with this, um, annexation agreement, so that their concerns are noted at the, you know, at the time when there is development. Uh, you know, they're just requesting that there be things like parks and, uh, deterrents to traffic, you know, things that, you know, I normally, but I, I just would want it in the file so that when, or if development, you know, comes. And, and that's the thing of it, we don't know, there's no plans to, to develop that land. And, you know, it's not the, next to Creekside Estates, as far as I see, is all still gonna be, um, housing. And the upper north section there, there aren't any houses. So, I don't see, you know, we will, when these things get to be developed, all your concerns about drainage and flooding, those will all be looked at carefully and taken, you know, we don't just let somebody come in and just do whatever they want just because they're zoned to put something in there. Uh, we went through a lot with, um, the property at 167th and Gauger, when they wanted to put in the facility like this. And, you know, I mean, this was looked at and looked at and looked at, and then finally it was decided that their, you know, proposal wasn't gonna work, and so, you know, it went back to, to great, no, it remained residential. So, uh- So, uh, you know, this looks to me like I, you know, property that's being connected to other property that's in the same categories. And I think it doesn't seem that the homeowners accept her, you know, I can see not wanting trucks coming through my neighborhood because, you know, that is a problem. But, you know, that would all be worked out. It's not like we're going to just say, okay, we're going to annex this property and we're going to allow the rezoning and then, too bad people, whatever these people want. That's not going to happen. I prob-, you know, I know that how this, you know, the city works and they look at things and they care about it. But this property isn't city property, this is property is owned by a developer. It's not like we own it. So by bringing it into the city, we'll have more control than if they, you know, just took it and decided to go maybe to Ingle County or something. But anyway, Ben, I'd like this put, uh, in the file and that's all.
Thanks, Denise. Jason, you got anything?
Yeah. I don't have too much to add that hasn't already been said and isn't going to be said probably by everybody here. Um, one of the things I was going to do is talk a little bit about the process and Denise actually kind of covered it with, with, um, the, uh, one hundred and sixty-seventh and would it be Gauger, or one hundred and sixty-seventh and three fifty-five, essentially the development that we went through. Um, right now, we're looking at which zone is appropriate. And we got a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Council as well as staff, which is based on the LaSalle standards. Um, all, and that's, that's kind of the way we go about these things all the time. Really, all of that are indicating that this would be an appropriate use based on what's already there, what is in, you know, pre-existing documents. Um, that being said, I, I totally understand the, hey, I don't want, you know, roads with semis connecting to my subdivision. Um, this is pretty standard for us. We had it behind our subdivision. We had some buildings that were going to go in. Um, they've kind of, they're in a stalled phase now, like I mentioned, Karen Springs Five. Once we get a development to look at, that's the time where I know I personally go out and walk every property that's about to be developed before I vote. And I'll look and say, hey, is this going to, how is this going to impact people? And, and, you know, make my best judgment. At this point, I think that all signs are pointing to this being inappropriate, zoned for it. Um, that being said, just with appropriate zoning, there are still things to be, many things to be taken into consideration before anything is actually built there. And I think a lot of the points that are made, um, about where, where we need to be careful, uh, I think traffic going north instead of south. And as Ron said, you know, topography wise makes sense, but I also think for the residents makes sense. Um, and those are all things that we do need to be cognizant of as we move forward. But as far as actual zoning and currently permitted uses versus what we would be, um, permitting if, if we accepted this, it feels pretty appropriate to me.
I like to look at the history of things and, uh, which is the reason why I requested, um, that the city attorney provide us with, um, the, the council with a memo that he read today. And then, then today I did a, just some, um, just a quick, um, I really did want to know when I three fifty-five was, uh, was, uh, first, uh, like, uh, talked about. And the reason why here is, is simply is to go ahead and stand, it's a timeline, okay? Um, I'm one of the two aldermen here in Lockport who grew up here. And I grew up on Reed Street. And my folks built their first house on Reed Street in nineteen sixty-five. And for those of you who lived there, lived in Lockport in nineteen sixty-five, we moved into our house about three days after the tornado. Reed Street at that time was a gravel road and was the eastern boundary of the city of Lockport. They built another house in nineteen sixty-nine on the S curve on Reed Street and within a couple of years, Putnam Drive and Runyon Drive were then cut in. Things continue to go ahead and expand in my, and in the early seventies, we had, uh, a subdivision called First Acres that was built in my backyard. Um, I had concerns at that time simply because it was my football field and baseball field and houses were being built then. Runcie Point came in and Lockport expanded. I came back to Lockport to go ahead and open up my office as a chiropractor in nineteen ninety because of three fifty-five. Three fifty-five was originally supposed to be built in nineteen eighty-seven. It took another twenty years for it to get done. So it's progress. Things have moved on as, as, and, and, and some of the comments, I was also at the Planning and Zoning Committee, and so some of the comments were, you're rushing into this. Well, um, nothing was rushed into when we have some property that was zoned M1, well, actually was I, I1, back in the nineteen sixties, which is now M1, on the western portion. And in two thousand and one, it was zoned on the eastern portion of the property, was zoned O2, which according to our current definition is, is, uh, would be allowed an M1 zoning. And all the houses in Creekside South and North and Hawthorne Estates were all built after these properties were either A, three fifty-five was first laid out, M1 zoning for the Lockport Heights area. So I understand the frustration that people have, okay? But the history is, is these properties were zoned a specific way before many of the homes were even built. So when I hear things like, if I would have known that, fill in the blank, I would not have purchased my property, it was all public knowledge. It was all available to anybody at the time. We heard the statements, somebody made a statement that if this piece of property is zoned M1, that property value is going to go down ten to twenty-five percent. That's either true or it isn't. So in order for it to be true, we should be able to go ahead and be able to find actual real data to go ahead and prove that it's either true or it's false. A year ago, when we had a, a discussion about potential use of property at one hundred and sixty-third and Gauger, I actually spent two afternoons and I typed and I did a Google search, impact of commercial property next to, uh, existing residential property. I wasn't able to find anything except for three articles on Walmart. I did the same search yesterday. Once again, I was unable to find any data where it states that building, commercial, manufacturing, or retail developments next to existing residential property has a negative effect on the property, except for Walmart. And you can actually go ahead and type in the Walmart effect and residential property and you will find some articles. And in every article, the conclusion was there was zero effect or a positive effect in property values. Now, don't believe me. The research is, is, is out there for, for each and every one of you. So it's very difficult for me to accept the statement, if you allow this, then my property values are going to go down because I am unable to find any data to that effect. Yes, it is true that most of you purchased your homes between two thousand and five and two thousand and eleven. During that period of time, your properties have lost value. So has mine. My property compared to two thousand and eight, which was the high water mark for every single residential property in the city of Lockport, my property has lost twenty-five percent of the assessed value in two thousand and eight. But there's a difference between my, my situation and many of your situations. I purchased my house in nineteen ninety-three for a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. My notice of two forty-four revised assessment that I received and you all received sometime in the last month, that assessed that market value is now down to seventy-two, is now seventy, a hundred and seventy-two thousand from a high water mark of two hundred and twenty-one thousand. The difference is, for me is, I am not underwater. And I understand that many people in this room purchased their homes in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, and in two thousand and eight. And every single one of you has lost assessed value of your property. That loss in the assessed value of your property had nothing to do with the zoned property to the, immediately to the north because it was already zoned M1 and was already zoned M2. So if this data, this information, if, anybody can find out this information two ways. They can either go to the Will County Supervisor's Assessments website, or the easiest way to do it is to go to zillow.com and just type in your address and you will be able to go ahead and not only get the, the, um, assessed value of not only your property, but your neighbor's property, the taxes that they paid. Another comment was about taxes in your area. Yes, those of you who live in District ninety-two pay a boatload of taxes. But that boatload of taxes is to District ninety-two and District two oh five. That's who you pay taxes to. We all pay at least sixty-two percent of our property taxes to the school districts. The city of Lockport tax rate last year was point nine eight eight or point nine nine eight. Less than ten percent of your property tax goes to the city of Lockport. So when a statement is made such as, my Lockport taxes are high, the specific is, your District ninety-two taxes are high. Why are your District ninety-two taxes high? It's real simple. Between nineteen ninety-five and now, two-thirds of the houses that are there were built. So I understand your concerns. The concern at this time is, is this piece of property, is it appropriate for this piece of property to be zoned M1? And the answer to that question is, is yes. That's all I have to say. My thanks. Kelly, you got anything?
Okay. Real quick. Um, the, uh, the city of, uh, the village of Hintale was brought up. Hintale had a lumberyard in the downtown for a long time and blocked the way they had houses. We'll play through this. Um, Oakbrook, they had an IBM plant, which is housed, and yet they had million dollar houses. The, the village of Burr Ridge was built around an old international harvester plant. And they still farmed it for years, the, uh, the area around the plant. And Orland Park, one of their high-end developments, Crystal Tree, was built around, uh, built right next door to one of their industrial sites. The thing is, is that, um, this, this does happen a lot. I'll give you a, a little briefer history than the previous alderman. In the nineteen eighties and nineties, uh, Lockport knew that, um, three fifty-five or the federal number at AP four thirty-five was going to come through. So Lockport started to plan for it. And they started to plan for it because, um, everybody knew that with, uh, with expressways, the best use of mountain expressway was, was either commercial or industrial. What Lockport started to do back then was to build, uh, water pipelines and sewer pipelines to that area, which we did at great expense. So Lockport, um, and they made other developers put in oversized lines that they really didn't have to. But we did it so that we could have water and sewer to that area and that your area benefits it also. So the, when, when you hear this, um, that, you know, we don't want to live next to industrial, et cetera, there's a lot of very high-end towns that have, that have industrial. There's a lot of very high-end towns that, um, you know, I mean, Hintale has multi-million dollar houses, Burr Ridge has multi-million dollar houses. And so at that point, they've been able to survive next, next to those areas without any real detriment. And when, uh, when Walmart was coming in, I asked the realtors about the impact of a Walmart on, um, on local housing and they said the value goes up. Now, now that's not a Walmart, but that's not on a, uh, that's not necessarily a industrial. But the fact is, is that, um, we, we, Lockport, um, and every other city needs taxes. And houses are a, uh, are a net zero. Houses cost what you pay a tax. In other words, you, your taxes pay for streets, your taxes pay for snowflowing, your taxes pay for this and that, but it's a, it doesn't, we don't gain anything from it. The only thing that we gain from it is from, is from business that comes in. So it's a, um, I live in the downtown. The mayor lives in the downtown. The mayor here is semi-traffic, go right by his front porch. I have, I have, um, the same, first thing I had to get used to was trains, barges and everything else, motorcycles, the whole thing. I don't hear any of them now. You don't, that's a lie. But, um, but so it's different parts of the town. Lockport's always been an industrial town. If its name is Lockport, we were a port for, uh, we had lock, we had barges come through there. Abraham Lincoln was on the, uh, on the Illinois and Michigan Canal Commission, was commissioned. So the history is, is, it was planted with industry. The history was planted with that, uh, people could coexist next to the industry. And with modern planning, in the old days, they would just build it. Um, when Oakbrook built around their IBM facility and the, and the industrial park that I'm speaking of, they just built it. You, you had your, uh, you had a little bit of grass and you had a house. Nowadays, you put in, uh, buffers, you put in, um, and, and that, yeah, but they're, you know, they, they have raised land so that the noise has kept down, et cetera. But if, if every housing development, it was so after, as Darren said, after, um, we already had this all zoned, your realtor could have provided that to you. Um, but, um, probably didn't, but, um, but it was already zoned that way. So if we don't do it, then we are going to be, uh, a, a no-tax revenue city. And then tax, and then the only thing that happens then is that your taxes go up. The only thing that drives your taxes down is, is when business comes in. Nothing else drives it down. So that, the, um, um, when, when you look at the, the horror stories and, and, and every, every, every time some change comes in, nobody wants it. But, but we all have to, uh, towards that and it's been in, it's been in the planning process for decades. Thank you very much. Uh, Pete, you got something?
Yeah. Um, so for, for the benefit of those residents who are at home and couldn't make the meeting today, and, um, for those also who couldn't attend, uh, the meetings that Alderman Capadona and I and the staff have had with the residents, um, just wanted to kind of give you a little summary of that. And I, I thank all the aldermen who did call me and Alderman Capadona to find out how those discussions have gone. Uh, I think, of course, that helps their understanding of the issue a little bit more fully, helps them to have more full knowledge. Um, so what I, what, all I wanted to say here tonight is that, um, this is really, all, it, it helps to have some perspective from both sides. And like everything with public policy, once you understand the perspective from both sides, it's all a balancing act, right? It's trying to find that middle ground that both sides can live with. And I think that's what we're going to have here. Um, the residents certainly are not being unreasonable in their, uh, their requests and, and certainly not in their concerns. What we've heard from the residents is, um, that, you know, here's the bottom line, and we, we should know this as elected officials. It, it's, it's impossible to raise your family, work for a living, and enjoy your life and still pay attention to every little thing that happens here in the city of Lockport. It's impossible to go to every meeting, to watch every meeting, to know when a three fifty-five corridor master plan is put together and when it's amended, which just happened in, in February two thousand and fourteen. So for those who say, why didn't you know, to the residents, why didn't you know this is probably going to happen, I would respond and say, I'm an alderman and I think the mayor hinted at this as well early in the meeting. When we weren't up here, we didn't really know everything that was going on either. So it's not shocking that residents come to us with surprise to say, what's going on here? And it's not, also not shocking that residents would be concerned when they see that, um, what's, what's categorized as M1, uh, manufacturing is proposed right next to their neighborhood. So as, as a resident, as a, as a- So as, as a resident, as a, as a father, um, I, I see their concerns, understand them, and would have the same concerns if I were in their situation. So I just wanted to get that out of the gate, first of all. Secondly, um, you know, the, the residents, uh, let me back up. The, the residents, when we, when Chris and I met with them, um, we, we explained to them that this is, is said, has been said a few times, this is not a city-initiated, um, action item. This, this property was owned by somebody. And just like any property owner, um, when you own that property, you have the right to develop it if you'd like to, and, and whatever ways you can that fits with, uh, the local ordinances and zoning. And so that's what's happening here, is we have a property owner that's bringing something forward to say, "This is my land. I'd like to, uh, get it rezoned according to your three fifty-five master plan, and I'd like to eventually sell it to a developer." And, um, and as we talked about, that's going to, we'll, we'll see the particulars of that in the PUD. Um, that landowner has the right to look at everything that's around that property and say, "The zoning I'm requesting fits with everything around us." So you see the O2 and the M1, which overlap, it's office parks, for the most part. You, you know what they are because you see some of it being developed on the east side of three fifty-five. And so that landowner has the right to say, "What I'm proposing is consistent, uh, with what else, whatever else is around me." And if the city were to deny that, since it's a reasonable request, we could set ourselves up for some legal liability there. Um, one of the residents at a meeting said, "Well, yeah, but there's also residential on the south side and on the north side. That's consistent. Why can't the developer make it all residential? Why can't he make the same argument there, not the developer, the landowner?" And the response to that is, "It's still the landowner's prerogative because it is his property." And so we have to be respectful of that, and we've asked the landowner to be respectful of the residents' concerns as well. And so what the residents are basically saying is this, you know, we can argue all day long about whether property values will go up, property values will go down, if they'll stay the same. Uh, the reality is, some of the residents have said that, um, their neighbors have already put their houses up for sale because they're concerned about what's going to come in and what it's going to do to their quality of life. So I don't, I don't know those residents. I don't know if they put them up for sale because of this or not. Um, that's all hearsay. But we're, we're, we're probably never going to know that. But no, I, in my experience in development and talking to planners, I don't think any, um, responsible urban planner would put an M1 use in, in, right in the middle of two residential uses like we have here. If they, in a perfect world, if it wa, if the land were all barren and we could kind of plot it out, like SimCity or whatever, and put it all together, um, we probably would do a little, something a little bit different here. But the reality is reality, and the history's been detailed very well here tonight, that's just kind of how, how all the chips fell, and it leads, leaves the residents with very little, um, alternatives, and the city with very little alternatives as well. But we have to represent them as best possible. So in our discussions with the, with the residents, what they're, all that they're looking for, and it's not unreasonable, is for the city to be mindful, and as Denise brought up, to include in its annexation agreement the concerns of the residents. Um, you know, what, what about the heights of the building, uh, the lighting, um, the buffering, the, the vegetation? You know, that, sure, the developer's not going to cut down any more trees. He's offered to put that in the agreement. But what about building up that buffer? In the wintertime, you can see right through those trees and into the future development. Um, what about the hours of operation, the noise, and all those things that would concern a resident? They want those things, um, documented, not only in the record here at the council, but preferably in an annexation agreement in some form, because I know I've seen it. Um, I've seen, not here in the city, but I've seen developers wear down a board, because we don't know when this land is going to sell and when a future developer is going to come in and offer a plan. That might be tomorrow, that might be in ten years, it might be in thirty years. If it's, if it's further on down the road, maybe none of us are up here, maybe we have new staff, many people who might not remember the discussion that's happening here tonight. And so I think what the residents want us to do is not forget them and, and to remember their concerns, and they're a little bit worried about just leaving it up to our word, to say, "Yeah, we know what you're saying, we're concerned about it as well, and when that PUD comes down the road, we're going to make sure that we, we get that taken care of for you." I think they want something that kind of locks us in a little bit more, something that the landowner can take to a future developer and say, "Listen, you know, this is in a unique situation because you're going to be, um, sandwiched between two residential developments. So when you're moving forward with your planning for this, understand that the city is going to run you through the wringer. The city's going to make sure that you're not just, you're not going to be able to develop this like any other development you have in a much more open area. There are, there are real people living in that area that have real concerns about their safety and their quality of life." And so that's all they're looking for, and I don't think that's unreasonable for them to ask that of the city. And also, one last point before I move it on to Alderman Capadona. At the Plan Commission meeting, there were a few residents from the unincorporated area of Lockport Heights that came to speak. And I'm, I'm going to speak for myself here, but I'm not of the mind that because you're unincorporated, leadership here at the city should not be mindful of your concerns. You have very, many of the same, uh, that the Creekside residents have and those around the Creekside subdivision have. And I, I speak for myself, and I'm sure a number of other aldermen will agree, that whatever we do moving forward with that planning for the PUD, we'll keep your concerns in mind as well. And we want you to come to our council meetings and make sure that your voice is heard too. You're our neighbors, you're a part of our community, you're a part of whether or not Lockport succeeds or fails, so we want to make sure that you're a part of that. And, um, also, I'm just going to say this about the unincorporated. I did hear an unincorporated resident raise a concern at the Planning Commission meeting that, once this is annexed into the city, that this would give the city an opportunity to force annex all of Lockport Heights. And I understand that's a concern for them, but I know, I don't think the city has any plans to do that. And, and as I said, this is a, a landowner-initiated, um, um, agenda item. The city isn't pushing, putting this forward with a scheme in mind that we're going to force annex the unincorporated areas north of this, uh, um, development. So put your minds at ease. This isn't part of, and I'm sure the mayor and staff can confirm what I just said, but this isn't part of a larger plan to force annex you into the city. And that was one of the concerns I heard that I wanted to address, to address tonight. And, and, by the way, Mayor, I think the residents will be given an opportunity to speak later. Just so you know, I don't think that was said, but for those of you who have come ready to speak, there will be opportunities for you to fill in the blanks for the things that I've said and the other aldermen have said, and what Alderman Capadona is about to say. So if we missed anything, certainly bring that forward, and we'll make it a part of the record. That's all.
Chris, what do you got?
Thanks. First, I want to preface this, I just nagged and coughed a lot of problems when I'm speaking here. Um, hey, I appreciate all the residents who came also, like Alderman Colorelli said, and I think he said a lot as well. Um, we've had several meetings with the residents, all those meetings throughout, several meetings with the applicant too, and applicant's counsel. And there, there have been, as Alderman Colorelli said, there have been some concessions already made by the applicant with regards to the R1 and some of the trees. But there, there still are concerns out there by the residents. You know, these are residences, these are, you know, my neighbors, Alderman Colorelli's neighbors, um, some of your neighbors, my children share the same parks with these residents. Um, so I run into them and, you know, I'm constantly hearing their concerns, and I understand these concerns. These are veiled concerns. Um, it's not just so much drainage or flooding, um, there are concerns with quality of life. And, um, I think Alderman Colorelli addressed what those concerns are and some things that, that the residents are still concerned about with this, so I'm not going to go through those again. But this is a balancing, um, because we went through the history of this property, um, and this is a, it's a unique situation because it's, it's not like what we addressed before with Gauger Road. It's, it's a completely different situation. This is a property that's being asked to be rezoned, um, to an M1. There we had, it was existing residential, um, we don't have that here. It's, it's a different situation. But there's not a developer here, and that's what's distinct about this. And that's what makes some of these issues a little more confusing, um, because we're promising to address this with you later down the road, um, but we can't make any guarantees as to what those, what those will be. But the balancing act comes in, um, and I think, uh, this was addressed as well at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, that the city wants to have control, um, as to what's developed there. And one of the, one of the ways we do that is through the PUD. If these parcels were separated, I don't know if we would be able to do that. So one of the important things for the city in that consideration of controlling what's developed there, when a developer finally does come in, is to be able to PUD that. So combining these properties as, as the applicant is proposing right now, is actually beneficial in the sense that the city's going to have more control over that. So when a developer does come in and, and ask the city to put up, um, buildings, whatever they may be, the city is going to have more control to say, "Well, that's fine, but these, this is where I want these buildings, and these are the buffers that we want, um, and these are the other considerations and restrictions, height restrictions, hours of operation restriction." Some of that that we're looking to address now, um, but in a PUD, that could be addressed, um, more fully, and that's better addressed as these parcels as a whole, because there are, um, acreage requirements with the PUD, and I don't know, I'd have to look it up, but I don't know if, if, if these properties asked to be developed separately, if they could be, if they could qualify, if it would be city rules in order. So that's the balancing that we're trying to do with control, is keeping in mind what the residents' concerns are, and, um, as Alderman Colorelli expressed, that if this wasn't a city-driven, um, zoning of this property, which is an application brought before the city, which is a process, that we have to go through to address the applicant. Um, we can't just ignore him, we can't say, "No, we don't, we don't want it. We have to address his, um, his application through our formal process." Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Um, just so you know, usually the way meetings run, people fill out cards to speak if they want to talk before and during what we're doing right now. And people that don't fill out cards are able to speak at the open floor comment at the end of the meeting. Only that's the way we run it. You know, but for continuity's sake, and because, you know, this isn't come down from Mount Sinai, we're allowed to change gears if we need to, um, I'm okay with opening the, the floor to comments now. I know Jim Belata came up here and snuck a card in, so Jim, of course, I want you to come up here and speak. But just, I want to preface this before, uh, we allow open floor comments, is if you feel like you're just going to repeat the same thing that, you know, has been said already, there's no need. We get, we understand what's going on. Um, but by all means, Jimmy, fill out a card, come up and speak, and I'll say a few words, and then we'll open up the open floor comment.
You know, and one more point. I know that the residents who are at the Plan Commission meeting noticed this, but if you, if you are asking questions, oftentimes what the public body will do, will log your questions and then answer them all at the end, as opposed to having a back and forth. So if you, I know you saw that at the Plan Commission meeting. If you don't see us respond, that's why. We're just holding off and logging them, and then we'll respond to your concerns or questions at the end of the, your speaking, if you're open speaking.
Yeah, here, here's the way, here's the way I run these meetings when it's a hot topic like tonight. I mean, everybody's got a lot of concerns, a lot of anxieties. I'm okay with that, all right? This is part of our job. Sometimes we're here late for meetings like this, but this is, it's okay. We want to hear everything, make sure you feel like you had an opportunity to speak, okay? So go ahead, Jim.
Uh, wait, I would just like to, um, this is the, uh, information that, that came from the Creekside Association, if you guys at all.
Sure. We, we receive electronic copies too, but, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Jim. So. Thank you, Alderman Mayor, for giving us the time and hearing this out. Obviously, it's a controversial issue, controversial issue. I live at, uh, one six six four zero West Soulside Court in the Creekside North, face the back of the original zone, M1 back in nineteen sixty. It was there. I totally understand it. We all know that was there. We all know growth is important to the, to Lockport. We want growth, or that tax increases keep coming back on our homeowners. We totally understand that. We just have concerns and make sure we're protected, that's all we're doing. I want to, definitely want, I want to say an extra thank you to Alderman Colorelli, Alderman Capadona, Mr. Martin for meeting with us on several times, several meetings. I think we had four or five alone, um, trying to work something out where, um, it could work out for everybody. Will County's become a trucking mecca, we know that. We see it everywhere. Um, you see it happening, ML's doing their thing on the east side, it's only natural this stuff's happening over there. I just get back to protecting us and our concerns. Um, we, perfect world, yeah, there'd be residential back there at Openfield, we know that can't happen. We don't own that property, okay? And someone has the right to develop it. Totally agree with the comments you guys said there. Um, it makes sense. Mr. Martin and his clients have all the rights in the world to do that, and that's, that's what makes this world great. Uh, we want, we want them to be successful because it makes Lockport successful, and we're part of Lockport. We're just, there's a few things that I think were addressed, and I think they're all going to be addressed. Um, the R1 zoning was good, Mr. Martin and his client agreed to change that. It started out as M1 directly east of Creekside. We thank you for changing that and, and making that R1. It was in your comprehensive plan that way, it makes all the sense in the world. Um, there's a tree line directly to the north of that. Um, well, I know the developer or the owner would like to keep that into their current M1. This is me talking, not this representative or anyone else. I have no problem with that, as long as that tree line's protected, whether it's R1, M1, it really doesn't matter as long as there's a, not necessarily have to be a conservation easement on there, like they have, which is north of the Creekside Estates, north, where the park district controls it. They like to keep that in there for some zoning and lock coverages, that's fine too, as long as there's a protection in there. Um, I think that's reasonable. I think it's very reasonable, because that's all we'll have, because the elevation changes from where Creekside's at and where this property's at is substantial. So when you get a building, a forty-foot building height up there for their transportation center, whatever they're going to do, their, their storage, it's going to be that much more visible. So, um, I think that is something very reasonable request, and I think they're, they're, will accommodate us on that. The PUD aspect of it, I think, is critical, because we'll, we will be able to address the minutia of this, where the roads are going to be, where's the detention going to be, the, you know, the hours of operation, the lighting, blah, blah, blah. We don't even know what's going to be built there. We, we don't know. It could, the market right now stands for these warehousing, that's probably what's going to happen, but, uh, and so if we could be, I don't know the notification, and maybe you can answer this, uh, for me, is it simply your, your four font or six font, and we did that to county all the time, uh, your public notices in the, in the newspaper that nobody reads. When they come in for a PUD, can we ask that we are notified, maybe that two-hundred-and-fifty foot line, like to deal with the rezoning or whatever that aspect would be, just so maybe we're, we're at the table to, you know, look at, look at what the development is, is going to be before it actually physically gets, gets passed? I think that's something that is not an unreasonable request. So if we can get notified of that, we get our tree line protected, I think if you put that in the annexation agreement, that's where the meat's at. The zoning is a zoning change, the meat's in your annexation agreement, because when Mr. Martin and his clients sell this property to a developer, and it might take a year, it might take ten years to do, none of you might be there, I might not be there, but this way it'll protect the people in the future. So I think those are very reasonable requests. It'll allow the developer to get what they need and they want, and it'll allow us, give us some protections as well. Because then, once the PUD comes in, we know about it, we can sit with them and say, "Yeah, maybe, you know, take some of those soils, can we make a, a higher berm here and get some, uh, you know, pine trees, because when the deciduous trees lose their, their leaves, we're looking right at it." So I don't think we're being unreasonable with these requests. We are concerned, this is different, you know? Times have changed. When that was zoned in nineteen sixty, Lockport was way different, you know, so. But this is an aspect of growth. When you have your growth with, uh, the existing, you always run into concerns like that. But I think we can make this work, in, in my opinion, um, if we could, uh, have those couple things in the, in the annexation agreements, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Um, yeah, I mean, these are all things that we can, we can talk about from the event. And, uh, you know, one, I, I know a number of people that live in, in the unincorporated area just north of this property, and, and, uh, you know, I know pretty well, and they oftentimes, you know, rib me about how happy they are that they're not in Lockport. And I was like, "Ah, I don't have to pay your taxes, and I don't have to follow this rule or that rule, and I can burn my leaves whenever I want to," and, and that's good. I, that's, that's why they live there. But they're right. The city has no authority in that area. And right now, this section that we're talking about annexing, we have no authority there either. And the M1 section and the O2 section that are currently zoned and in the city, they can be developed right now, as those zonings call for. So this isn't new. And it, but when it comes to this property in the middle, as has been said before, the only way we're going to have any opportunity to put a PUD, to have any controls, to have any say, is to actually have it annexed into the city. Because otherwise, these two parcels on either side will get developed independently, and and then this third parcel in the middle owned by the county, or run by the county, that'll get developed independently, and it's not that the county doesn't put, you know, refineries and every other, I mean, it's not that a refinery's going to go here, but like, anything can go there, and then you're going to be fighting this battle here, and you're going to be fighting a battle with the county, and you're going to be going to meetings all over the place, and as Chris Capadona pointed out, well, there'll be no consistency. The beauty of having this all annexed into the city is that, yes, this council can, or future councils, maybe 20 years from now, but has the opportunity to actually make consistencies so that it works together, flows together, and is going to, you know, have the least detrimental impact to anybody who lives on either side of it, and that's really what this is about tonight. This isn't about developing anything right now, it's about being able to have the city have some control and have some say so that we can address your concerns. If it's not annexed into the city, we will not be able to do that, and anything can happen out there, so, it is important for us to, and, and, you know, and the other thing too, as Ronald pointed out earlier, you know, oh, people don't live in Lockport, you know, what do they care, and, well, the fact is, we do live in Lockport, and if this central area is, you know, all county property, very well, the people you'll be appealing to might live in Mokena, you know, right now, you get to appeal to your aldermen, and, and I know that Pete and, and Chris have done a very good job of attending the meetings, keeping us informed as well, and, but it's important that we allow some local control so that we can make sure that all of our concerns here are addressed as, as things move on. Like I said, the normal way we run meetings now is we would move on to the next agenda item, but because this is a topic that's, you know, everybody's here for tonight, I don't mind moving, you know, the way the meeting is run around a little bit, we'll open, do open comments now, as I said before, all I ask is, you know, there's no sense repeating the same things, if there's new questions, please, come on up, otherwise, I think, pretty much covered things, but please, by all means, if there's somebody who has something to say, feel free to come up to the podium. I just ask you to state your name and address, please.
My name is Fran Fallon, I live at 204 Bluff Street in Lockport. I'm not here about your annexation, I'm here about an article that was in the August 31st paper, about how you are considering controlling businesses and restrictions in downtown.
Oh, yeah, you know, Fran, I'll keep, I am going to keep on topic though, that is later in the meeting tonight, so if you can be patient, we will absolutely talk about that later. I will only open the floor comments up for this.
Okay, I, I don't have a lot to say, I just want to say, be cautious about restricting. You know, it is a free country, and you don't encourage entrepreneurs when you have a list of restrictions.
We will absolutely address this, Fran, I promise.
Okay.
If you're here, when we get to that, I will, we will.
Okay.
Right now, we need order to the meeting and talk about the topic like that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I want to point out that Fran is the former assistant alderman, thank you for your service, ma'am. All right, folks, so we will move on to the next item, then, we've already asked what you want to do with this, and with the next meetings and such, so.
I think, to answer Jim's question, by PUD, you're automatically notifying property within 250 feet of the, of the, of the property, so.
Yes, and actually, though that is the, the minimum requirement, because we recognized that this was a contentious issue, we actually notified the entire subdivision when the public hearings were being conducted, and we will do the same when the PUD comes through, just because the additional people that would need to be notified is, is really, you know, miniscule. In addition to that, I just want to clarify for the public that what the city also has with respect to control, not only through the PUD process, but we also have adopted design and development guidelines for all types of development that comes through the city, and those really revolve around creating high-quality, high-level development, both from a site planning standpoint, landscaping standpoint, signage, et cetera, so I just wanted to let the residents know that in addition to that, we do have design and development guidelines in place, which any development will be subject to.
And those apply to residential as well, that was another concern I failed to mention, that the residents were worried about the new R1 to their east, they want to make sure that no junk housing goes in there, that it's consistent with what they see, you know, neighborhood.
And I would like to suggest to all of you that you mark the dates of this council meeting, and the next council meeting, when it's voted on, and also, maybe the planning and zoning meetings, mark those dates so that in the future, you know when, where to go to look up what was said and what was promised, that way, you know, you'll have easy access to it.
All right, folks, I know it's a hassle, and nobody wants to come out here and sit through this kind of stuff, but it's important to us, so, we've all done it for other topics, and so I, I do appreciate you coming out here, and, like he said, stay frosty, and look for the, the other meetings, and of course, that's what we're all here for, so. All right, thank you. And, what do we, what do we got, Jack, you have something next? Want to, want to, I don't know if we want to give a 20-second break if there's ones that leave, or?
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor, what we have this evening, the next item on the agenda is, we'll be seeking authorization to award a bid, and a motion to approve a resolution regarding property casualty and workers' compensation insurance. About six months ago, this, this council asked staff to go out for a three-year RFP, you know, staff formed a committee, we evaluated three petitioners in response to RFP, to broker our insurance business, we scored all those petitions on five main points, experience in the municipal market, qualifications and references, the variety of services they provide, the ability to execute the contract on a, on a timely basis, and compensation competitiveness. You know, I'm happy to report tonight that the recommendation is going to be with A.J. Gallagher, we do have reps from the firm here this evening, Jessica and Rich are going to, I think, give you a short intro to their company and a, and a handout, and then we'll be looking for your approvals.
Thank you. They were very patient this evening.
Yeah.
They were very patient this evening.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, you're talking in the unincorporated area? Sure, you know what, what? Yeah, listen, I, I agree with you, you need to be informed, what we'll do is we'll reach out to, I think Ron Albarico, they can mail postcards, I mean, Ron Albarico is me for the county, or for unincorporated Lockport, so, we'll let them know, like, look, your area of town is affected by this too, Ron, you need to make sure that you inform your residents when things are going down, so if we can reach out to Ron and let them do a mailing for this kind of stuff. There'll be a number of meetings, ma'am, we've got meetings talking about the annexation, we have meetings talking about, you know, that will eventually vote on it, and then, whenever it finally gets developed, if the developer comes out, there'll be meetings, it might be 10 years from now, ma'am, if somebody actually comes and wants to develop it, this is all just for annexation, this has nothing to do with what's being built, nobody's presenting anything about what's going to be built here, you mentioned the factory, it could be an office building, we have no idea, we probably will all be dead and in the ground, you know, if something, by something happens, we, you don't know, so when that happens one day, by all means, you know, we'll make sure that the unincorporated areas aren't, are notified, okay? And, you know, you got to go through your mail, go through the mail carefully, I don't know what kind of mailings Ron Albarico sends out, if they're like little postcards or big bags. Okay.
Also listed on our, on our, on our website too, if you keep an eye on the website.
Yeah, but I, that's tough, yeah, 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 I, ma'am, we all have the same lives you do, okay? I get it, we all, we make 500 bucks a week, okay? A month, a month. No, this isn't like some, we're up here making the big bucks, yeah, so, it's, yeah, no, it's, we're all on the same thing, we're all with you, we're the same, same issues, so we'll make sure that you're notified by mail with Ron, so, we'll, we'll do that. Okay, back to property casualty and workers' compensation insurance brokerage.
Take it away. Thank you. My name is Rich DeKluis.
It's always a hot topic, stuff like this happens, so, thank you.
We're used to it.
Take the excitement, so relax.
You know, we clear out rooms when we talk about insurance, so. My name's Rich DeKluis, I'm the Midwest Regional Niche Practice Leader for the Public Sector. Jessica Golvik is the Team Leader in our corporate offices under Public, Public Sector. Thank you all for, you know, allowing us a couple minutes here just to go over everything. We actually went through this presentation with staff, which took about an hour, 15 hour and 20 minutes, we pulled pages out of there, so if you look in the right, bottom right-hand corner, they're not necessarily in the right order, we just pulled some things out to talk about with you. Basically, Arthur Gallagher started in 1927, we were a regional brokerage firm in Chicago, one office, three individuals, for a long time didn't do anything except to sell insurance downtown. Went in public in 1984, started to grow mostly by merger and acquisition, we had 31 acquisitions last year, 60 acquisitions the year before, we're on pace to be about the same, 50 to 60, 60 acquisitions for this year. So essentially what we've done is, we've actually grown to about 16,000 employees, and we'll probably be somewhere between 3.6 and 3.8 billion dollars in, in revenues, but we are a full-service brokerage firm, and Jessica will get into a little bit about what we provide to our clients. We have about 135 different cities that we insure throughout the Midwest, or through our office in the Midwest, we also do cities, counties, villages, townships, state governments, and special service districts, that is strictly what we do, day in, day out, that's like 99% of our, our book of business, and we do have a couple nonprofits, but basically, that is what we do for a living. If you turn to the second page, page three, we are the largest public entity brokerage firm in the country, we do about $560 million of premium, that number is climbing too, will probably be somewhere around the 580, 585 mark by the end of this year, we have 300 individuals in 34 different offices that dedicate their income, their, their workday to just working on public sector. In order to qualify for that, at least half of your business has to come from public sector, and then also, on the bottom of the page, we have a 96% client retention, industry average is somewhere around 82, 84%, somewhere in the low 80s. We have a number of different contracts, and the reason I'm telling you all this is how does it impact Lockport? One, we, we work exclusively with public sector, the premium volume that we have with the insurance companies allows us to leverage that in order to get better rates, long-term deals, two, three, multiple-year contracts, but we also get lower deductibles and, and more favorable coverage terms. The other thing too, is that we understand your business, so we don't have to come in here and ask you some of the basic questions, basically, you know, the miles and roads are not going to change, number of fire hydrants are not going to change, we, we know how fire departments work, police departments, water and sewer treatment facilities work, so.
Since we are a full-service brokerage firm, we have many other services that we offer besides just placing the insurance. I'm loud, at least I think I am. Many of the things that we plan to implement for the city are updating policies and procedures, and looking at your current safety manual, because it needs some updates, but those are some of the things that we've been talking about. If you turn to page seven, is a list of all of our loss control services that we currently offer all Gallagher clients, these are special to Gallagher, because since we do just focus on public sector business, we do offer only public sector services, mainly safety programs and on-site job safety trainings, and we also offer OSHA compliance trainings, and OSHA 10 and 30 courses, that are usually thousands of dollars to implement for a city, but you would get those just by being a Gallagher client. If you turn on the bottom, I think it's page 10, some of the additional services we offer, one that was of main interest was the cyber risk assessment, many of our public sector clients are looking at their cyber liability and making sure that their databases within the city are safe, and we can do a cyber liability audit, which we can look at all of the systems within the city of Lockport and make sure that they are safe, and that as much as we can tell you that they will not be hacked in the future, that's one service that we can offer, that most of our competitors do not, and we also offer full online training and resources via our online library. Now, if you have any questions or concerns about our proposal, we will answer those now.
Just wanted to point out, this is a $21,000 annual brokerage fee, and then they represent us to carriers, and we spend about $400,000 a year with insurance carriers that they represent us to.
What is the deductible? Since you said the, the goal is?
We haven't taken.
That'll be determined, they're the, they're the broker representation, so we will determine that once they go out to the market and, and bid for us and help us get that done, obviously we try to maintain where we are, but the market dictates where some of that may change. Again, this would be a, a three-year agreement, and we, our insurance runs out in, on December 1st, so we are on a timeline that we'd like to prove, if, if everyone's open to this agreement and relationship, I would even recommend possible consent agenda.
I think you did a great job of setting up to, to choose a candidate, and I'm glad you're with us, excited to be here.
Makes sense to me, I appreciate the competitive bid process, and.
Just, I might add a couple of words too, you know, we're, we're a council that tries to be as tapped in as we can to the services, and you've probably heard this of other elected bodies as well, and we want to get the best bang for our buck for our residents and taxpayers, so, getting that strong customer service is going to be important to us, heading off potential liability and vulnerabilities is going to be important to us, and, and we're going to be watching for that, so, it looks like you can offer that for us, and we hope you can, thanks.
I've got a question for you, on insurance rates, you guys are brokers, so you do know the industry, what kind of hit is, this is going to say, and government going to take from Obamacare this year?
That's a health insurance question, I'm not, we're pretty much property liability workers.
Workers' comp, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, see, that's a different line of insurance, that's the only insurance that this group does not represent for us, is health insurance.
I should buy that much.
Yeah. One thing that's important, and I know Ben has talked to you about this, is, as we're doing a lot of things in the city, you know, we end up throwing some curveballs at you, like, you know, you know, volunteer group is doing something on the Lincoln Landing, you know, can we work to get covered, and there's a lot of, a lot of things happening that, you know, I know that we look for flexibility and your, your help on this stuff, finding ways to make sure we're covered on a different area, so. One of the main things we also liked, the selection team was, you know, we were actually kind of inviting the winners to, we said, you know, you can be mean to us, we need you to come in and tell us if we're doing something wrong, audit our procedures, we need to, you know, we need to hear advice, and so they are an advocate for, for us and the city. Does anybody object to consent agenda?
They should, they should vote on this in money conduction.
That's fine. We don't, we don't have to, I mean, it's. You're still going to vote on it as a concern, I, either way.
It'll probably be a man.
So, yes.
Consent.
Yeah, I'd like to do a consent, if that's okay.
Fine.
Doesn't matter to me. Consent agenda, we'll see you guys, welcome.
All right.
Keith, what do you got?
Mayor, council members, I've been here eight months, and I've come to realize that Lockport's a very nice town, with a very low crime rate, so I thought the best way to illustrate that to you is by comparing statistics from the, for the last two years, and get this going. So what we did was, we compared 2013 to 2014 stats, we started with Part I offenses, which is the more serious offenses that we experienced, we had no homicides this year, criminal sexual assaults, we had one less, robberies, we had three less, robberies are a little hard to control, but we can actually control them, or we can have some input in controlling them by helping educate, educating the businesses, but it's hard to control a random person driving off 355 and robbing a store on Ninth Street. Aggravated battery, we've had 11 in 2013 and three this year, aggravated assault, one less this year, burglary, we've had 22 this year, but a lot of them are burglaries to garages.
Can I ask you just a quick question, is this 2014 year-to-date versus what, 2013?
No, it's. No, it's August 1st to August 1st.
Great, thank you.
A lot of these burglaries, both last year and this year, are burglaries to garages that are unlocked. And we also find with burglary to motor vehicle, most of our burglary to motor vehicles are unlocked cars, which indicates a non-professional criminal. So here we have 68 last year, 28 this year. The difference, the big difference is last year we had a ring of kids that were doing it, we caught them, and then they stopped. This year, I know Alderman Peretta had a question for me earlier about the burglary to motor vehicle, but we do have a strategy, and we are doing something about it, but I'd rather not discuss that. The way we're doing that is open forum. Theft remain about consistent with 78 both years. Motor vehicle theft, we had four this year. 20 years ago, I was an auto theft detective, and 20 years ago, the way you would steal a car is, you would punch a hole in the left side of the column, peel the thin metal away, and put a screwdriver in there, manipulate the ignition, start the car, drive off. Today's manufacturers have manufactured the cars, so they're pretty much theft-proof. So there's only three ways to steal a car right now. One is through identity theft, which is they provide fraudulent identification and a bogus check to either the dealer or the private person. Number two is they steal the keys, and number three is insurance fraud, where it's really an owner give-up, it's not really a theft, but it's reported as a theft. And the insurance companies do try to investigate them and charge the person when they catch them. They catch those guys too.
I know the state police recovered quite a few cars from the canal down in Willow Springs, and all those that had the keys and the ignition.
Yes.
They went back to those owners.
I believe they were, they were actually stacked so high that the barges hit them.
Right.
That was 25 years ago. And arson, we've had one this year, we had zero last year. Part II offenses, these are the less serious crime, although it's not serious if you're a victim of this crime. Battery, we've had 43 this year, batteries have gone up. Last year, we had 21. You'll see later that our disorderly conduct's will weigh down, and as Alderman Colorado knows, a former police officer, the discretion comes in with the police officer whether they charge somebody with battery disorderly conduct. Simple assault, we've had one less this year. Deception, this fooled me because identity theft is going way up, and our citizens are being taken advantage of through the internet. We do get a lot of reports of deception through the internet, whether it's a scam to make instant money, a scam to pay for something that's fraudulent. And I would have thought this statistic would have went up. It's going down, and I think that might be because it's not being reported enough. We have put, we have put out through the media ways that our residents can prevent being the victim of this kind of deceptive theft. Criminal damage to property went up a little bit in 2014. Weapons offenses, we've had three more this year, but these are offenses that are proactive police actions. This is a offense where our officers find it. If they weren't doing their job and they didn't do any, you'd have zero. We don't find weapons when we get called to situations, we find them on traffic stop. So that's a good thing, and I expect it to go up next year. Sex offenses, we've had three this year, five last year. offenses involving children, two and two. Cannabis violations have gone up. Our traffic stops have gone way up in the last year, and that's why the cannabis violations and possession of controlled substances have gone up. I didn't see that statistic, but it did go up as well. Motor vehicle offenses, we had 917 this year, 686, and we are making more traffic stop. More traffic stops means our officers are more visible, you're going to have less robberies, less traffic offenses, and hopefully it will, it will result in less traffic-related crashes and fatalities. Disorderly conduct, see, went down in 2014.
Chief, sorry to interrupt, are DUIs included in the motor vehicle offenses?
I'm sorry.
Are DUIs included in the motor vehicle offenses?
Yes. DUIs, suspended, revokes, all instances regarding a vehicle. Mislay statistics, in July, we initiated a method of traffic tracking, officers' activity. This was implemented for two reasons. The first reason is that the Senate, Senate Bill 3411 is the no quota bill, which basically says that we can't have a quota. Well, most police departments really didn't have a quota, but what they did have, they had an operation where they related traffic violations to the safety of motorists. But what this bill does, it prevents us from comparing officers. So if an officer is out there working his butt off, and he writes 10 tickets in a day, and another officer writes zero, we cannot evaluate them based on tickets. It's a ridiculous bill, but one that we have to live with. So an officer that's sitting in the donut shop, I mean, I just use that.
Yeah, because the police requested that that be a drive-through.
So what we did to address that is, we orientated the department's mission toward increased engagement with our citizens and businesses. But we are still actively involved in traffic enforcement, because it's a proven fact that traffic enforcement does result in less traffic crashes and less fatalities. And if we have an impact on fatalities and traffic crashes, we would be irresponsible not to do that. So we are still pushing for traffic enforcement, and with this new system that we have, we'll be engaged more with the community and businesses and community. This year already, since we implemented, we had 54 vacation checks, 161 business and community checks, and in them checks, we do things like talk about robberies, hey, you might want to do this, you know, you're robbery-prone by having that sign in the window. We also did 238 business security checks. Summary, total Part I offenses are down 23%, but I don't want to brag about that because when we get to the next stat, you'll see why. Total Part II offenses were up 22.3%.
What's a Part I and a Part II?
Part I is the serious offenses.
Oh, okay.
Part II is the lesser, the less offenses. But if you take away the traffic, now our people, like I said before, we have stressed traffic enforcement, because when you're writing traffic tickets, people see out there. One of the biggest complaints I get is that they don't see police officers. We have all marked cards, we have no unmarked card like other towns do, because we want visibility. But if you take away the traffic offenses, we're about even. And if you take away the proactive police things like the possession of cannabis, weapon offenses, we would actually be under just a slight bit for the Part II offenses. Basically, I'm going to tell you that we have a very low crime rate. We had a low crime rate last year, we have a low crime rate this year, and we plan to keep it that way.
All right. Chief, thanks for all the work. Thanks for partnering.
Yeah, the chief and deputy chief, always very responsive, doing a great job, you know, for the community, keeping everyone safe, and the continuation of citizens' police, I think that helps a little bit, getting more citizens involved and having everyone more aware of their surroundings. So, good job. Thank you, chief.
All right. Amy, you're up.
Okay, I have two items for committee of the whole tonight. The first item is consultant selection for our McGregor and North reconstruction surface transportation-funded project. On August 27th, the city officially received federal transportation funding for the McGregor and North reconstruction project in the amount of $1 million. This project will include the full reconstruction and widening of McGregor Road from Shoals to North, the reconstruction of North Street from McGregor to Reef, and the repair and resurfacing of North Street from Reef to Farrell. We hired James J. Bennett's earlier in the year to do a topo survey of the area and to evaluate any potential right-of-way needs before we applied for the funding. Since they have already completed this portion of the Phase 1 requirements, the topo survey and the right-of-way determination, we requested a proposal from them to complete the Phase 1 engineering for this project. We also requested an estimate for Phase 2 engineering. The not-to-exceed proposal submitted by James J. Bennett's was for $83,552. The CIP information sheet had budgeted $100,000 for Phase 1 engineering, as this cost is typically 8% to 10% of the estimated cost of construction. This proposal is for 8.3% of the estimated cost, which is pretty low. The estimated Phase 2, or estimated Phase 2 engineering cost is also attached to your package, but that will be approved through IDOT as it is partially funded by the grant. So this will be at the next city council meeting for approval for the award of the Phase 1 engineering contract to James J. Bennett's in the amount of $83,552.
Do you have any questions, Chris?
I just have one. Amy, for the benefit of the residents, I know, you know, the residents from Reef to Farrell are going to be very happy off North for what's going to be done in their streets, but they're in kind of an already improved area of Abbey Glen. The concerns that I've heard from residents are those on McGregor, where the widening is going to occur. And so for the benefit of the residents, can you just kind of give a timeline, so they kind of understand where this fits into the eventual reconstruction? We're talking about engineering here, what does a timeline look like for the actual construction of that roadway, especially McGregor?
Right now, this project is scheduled for 2017. Now, this is a federal aid project, so it has to go through the Phase 1, Phase 2 process, has to be approved by IDOT, we have to have public hearings, we have to have, you know, meetings for people to come out and look at the plans and to voice their concerns at those times. The actual construction will depend on how quickly this project gets approved through IDOT and how quickly the Phase 1 and Phase 2 process goes.
So 2017 at the earliest, it could extend a little bit beyond that.
It could.
But in the meantime, residents are going to have plenty of time to come in and meet with staff and aldermen and others like us that can talk to them through the project.
Yes. And it will, it will look pretty close to what it looks like just north of those residents that don't have the fully improved roadway, so that'll be, you know, they could look at that and see that's...
What's going to come down their way. Yep, okay. Thank you.
All right, so we're good with an action item then?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Amy. What's next?
The other item that I have on the agenda tonight is the Highlands Lift Station recommendation for selection of consultant. In the last year, the city has been negotiating with the developer of the Highlands of Lockport, and this is a mixed-use development at the northeast corner of 143rd and Archer. Negotiations were concerning the need for a lift station to accommodate the sewer flow from the development, and the city's desire to construct a more regional lift station that would eventually accommodate off-site flows from other developments near Archer and 143rd. The capital improvement program shows a construction cost of nearly $900,000 for the lift station, Gravity Main and Force Main. The proposal from Strand Associates for the design of the plans and specifications is for a not-to-exceed amount of $104,800. Engineering for this type of project is generally anywhere from 8% to 10% of the construction cost, depending upon the difficulty, difficulty level. The proposal for, by Strand, is about 11.6% of the estimated construction cost. However, this is a special circumstance, because this is going to require coordination between the developer and the city and the engineering firm, as well as permitting from the Illinois Department of Transportation for the crossings across Archer Avenue, and also coordination with IEP. The city will also be receiving development fees that will cover the cost of construction and engineering for this project. So our recommendation at the next city council meeting, this will also be up for approval at the next city council meeting, will be to enter into the agreement with Strand Associates for the engineering services to complete plans and specifications for the Highlands Lift Station in the amount of $104,800.
Any concerns? Greg's question?
I have a question. This could be answered by Amy, or Ron, or Pam. Does this now mean that the Highlands can go ahead and bring their preliminary plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission sometime in the near future?
Yes.
Good.
We are working on development agreement with the petitioner.
And for the benefit of residents who might not be able to see the map, this would be, so they get it geographically, I know you said 143rd and Archer, but it's a little bit further north, just north of where the stands landscaping used to be, and most of the construction there for the lift station is going to be right up Basham Drive, right, in 141st Street. So you can, many of you probably driven by it and not even noticed it, but when you're driving up Archer, you can see Basham on the left-hand side.
All right, put it up for an action item.
Okay, um, hold on.
Can I go ahead and talk about the updates for construction and bring...
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I actually have another item for committee to hold that wasn't on the agenda. I was asked to, let's see if I can get it to come, I was asked to provide a construction update for the projects that are under construction, as well as, as well as do a discussion about the delays for the Division Street Bridge project. So, right now, I sent a PDF today to everyone about all of our major projects that are under construction right now. Just going to hit the highlights, the major ones. Our 2014 sidewalk program is about 90% completed, about it wrapped up, or it's wrapping up this week, hopefully with the final construction being the replacement of sidewalk around Taft School, which will either happen Friday afternoon or Saturday while the kids are not in school. The 2014 crack ceiling and patching project, the scheduled bid opening for this project is September 10th, and we will be at the September 17th city council meeting for the award of those contracts. The 10th and Jefferson Street reconstruction and water main replacement project is underway. The underground utility construction is underway. This week, we did encounter a conflict with AT&amp;T duct bank with a storm sewer. The contractor is working on the water main while we contact AT&amp;T to see if we can get that sorted out with minimal delays. The Wayland Street reconstruction project is also underway. All of the underground utilities are completed right now, with the exception of a couple of water main tie-ins across Lawrence Avenue. So as soon as those get tied in, we will be moving forward with the demolition of the roadway. And then, also, the Garfield Street reconstruction federal aid project is going to be starting this week. Austin Tyler will be out to start storm sewer work at the end of this week. The final project that I was going to bring up is the Division Street Bridge project. We were asked to provide an update and some comments regarding all of the delays that have occurred to this project. Right now, the void issue that we had has been resolved, and the contractor is moving forward with construction right now. So I will bring up Don Reba from Hampton, Lunzine, and Renwick. He is our resident engineer on that project. He is in charge of everything out there, and he can give you a little bit more detailed update.
Good evening. My name is Don Reba. Again, I'm the onsite engineer. With me, I have Steve Veggensen, he's our head designer out of our Springfield office, and Doug Paulus, he's the head of the construction group out of our HLR's office in Elgin. And I'm here to answer any questions and address any concerns about the project, since we are behind schedule.
When's it going to be done?
I have some comments.
Well, the completion date for the contract was the 22nd of August. Obviously, that date is here and gone.
That's when I started getting emails.
What do you mean?
That's when I started getting emails.
Right, right.
I'm going to practice all this by brace yourself, because we're kind of angry.
I did receive a revised schedule from the contractor with an extension time totaling 70 calendar days, which gives us to November, first week of November, which I've gone through it slightly. I haven't really gone through it with a fine-tooth comb yet, but I'm going to pick through it and chip away at it, because that's way too much time that's needed to get this project finished. Again, I haven't had a chance to sit down and go through it precisely to find out exactly when, but... Again, I haven't had a chance to sit down and go through it precisely to find out exactly when, but November first, November, first week of November is not going to happen. We're going to try to get done a lot quicker. And they are started again. They are working today. There's some extra time. They're going to work in overtime for the rest of the week, work in weekends, and they're going to try to get caught up. Hopefully, they do come through this time, barring any unforeseen circumstances such as rain delays or such, stuff like that.
I have, I mean, I want to say something for you. I mean, look, I understand stuff happens, all right? And things, you know, get delayed. The frustrating thing for us that, you know, we and the residents need some explanation for is, I know, I know you found a void and, you know, that had to be dealt with, but, you know, the idea that nothing else could happen until that was taken care of, this seems to baffle us. Like, it seemed like there was a lot of other aspects of this project that could have moved forward as opposed to, eh, we found a void. Get back to this project when that's solved. Because it just seems to me, once that's picked up, then we start on things that perhaps could have been done in the meantime. And the thing that makes this, you know, I don't know your feelings on this, but it seems like maybe it's an out-of-away project for you, but it is massively affecting our bridge traffic on the Ninth Street Bridge. It is absolutely unbearable for everybody to get back and forth on there, and that street is an imperative, you know, way of getting going south. So it's not a small item for us, and they've been, you know, pretty upset about this. And this is why we called you up here. I want to understand why you're not doing other things. You need to convince me that, you know, it's not because you guys are busy on other projects in other towns. And, you know, I, I'll let you speak, but I want to give you my frustration on it.
Sure. Sure. I fully understand the frustration. I mean, I, I've got a budget myself. I need to be other places as well when the job's finished. The longer this thing drags out, the more my budget goes down the tubes. I want this thing done as bad as you guys do. And I do take Ninth Street going home and to work too, and I do have to send traffic coming across, so I do understand that frustration as well.
I have some questions about the engineering. I'm not an engineer, okay? But we were all provided, within the past couple of days, a timeline, okay? And what's really confusing to me, being a non-engineer, is that the, there are some issues immediately from the day that this began, okay? The original start date was supposed to be April first. It didn't start until April, April fifteenth. And on that very first day, there are some issues with some line stops, okay? Now, I'm very confused how these issues with the line stops couldn't have been found out by looking at some blueprints or something in the five months prior to the original start date of April first. It makes no sense, and things came to a stop. And then what happened was, it began the first of well over thirty days of lost time on work. And I understand you're not the, not the construction people. I'm the one that asked that you be here this evening. And I'm also the one that asked Hurley to be here. I asked IDOT to be here. I asked Army Corps of Engineers to be here. I asked DNR to be here. I asked everybody involved in this project to be here tonight, okay? So I, so I do not expect you to address the construction issues, okay? So, so what we have here is, is, so I've got to be scratching my head and say, in five months, you couldn't, you didn't know that there were issues with this, with this line stop, okay? Further on, further on, in May, this was a construction thing, but what they, you know, A, well, that's the broken, that's the broken part. If we get Hurley here at the next meeting, they can address that. But one thing that, that really is extremely disappointing in this whole thing was about this mysterious void, okay? This void was, was found in, at the end of, at the end of June. Okay? Now, I have to believe that a bridge being built next to a canal that was dug in the eighteen thirties might have issues in, what are those things? Pilings or whatever they're called? What, what, what does that, okay? Okay? There may be some issues with what's currently there, especially since this is within fifty yards of lock number one where there's a pool which causes swirling water. I don't know what the void was, okay? But it would make sense to me that during the Phase One Engineering, that somebody would have gone out there with a ground penetrating radar to see if there were any issues with the canal and underneath, and underneath the bridge that was, that was there. And we find out later on in the memo that we received that the void was delineated. I do have a question. How was the void delineated?
My name's Steve Weggensen with HLR, the design engineer and signed plans. In the initial design, we had a geotech report done on site where they drilled two boreings on either side of the banks. They drilled down through the soil and into the rock. We took one boring on each side. We didn't take boreings at each individual locations of every pier, mainly for cost considerations. The, each of the soil boreings and rock corrings indicated solid rock, leathered rock, but solid rock. Ground penetrating radar at that depth, we're eighteen feet down at this level. I think it's about twelve feet to the top of the rock. We cored into six feet of solid rock. At the bottom of that, one, one piling question out of the twelve on site, we, we did get into that void below that. And we don't know how far above that, but at the, at the bottom of our six-foot deep core, two-foot diameter, we had about a four-inch hole. And so that opened up down below, okay? At that point, we didn't, we don't know, we, we did measure how deep it was. It was an additional eighteen feet below. So about forty feet below ground surface was the bottom of that void. Our initial repair solution was to widen that opening at the bottom of the, of the rock core, fill that with concrete material, up to the level, and then bring the piling back up to get full support. At the time, at early, early July, we came, Don Reba came up with an estimate based on prices in the contract and common practices to complete the work. At that time, we requested IDOT, and Don can speak better to this than me, of the timeline, but, but we requested IDOT's work and concurrence from Hurley of that repair. That is our preferred repair, is to fill that void. We thought at that time it'd be about a two-week delay and a cost in the range of seventeen thousand dollars. We thought that was reasonable for the size and the, and the scope of what could happen at that location. Problems then with the subcontractor, the drilling contractor, to get that person and that sub back on site. Hurley has encountered over the next six to eight weeks have been, have been significant. They're busy. They keep giving excuses to Hurley on why they can't get back. At, at the time of Hurley giving us an estimate of fifty-two thousand dollars, at that point, HLR went back and was requested to look at another alternative. And in time, we submitted a revised design to use the piling in place with additional reinforcements to the piling and the base and to the cap that holds the superstructure of the bridge up. And that's, that's the status we are, as Don mentioned. That's been approved and moved forward at this point.
Well, thank you for the answer, but yeah, but what we also find is this revised authorization wasn't submitted to IDOT until August twenty-seventh. So that's eight weeks after this void was found, and that's the frustrating thing, okay? And then, then, then what's frustrating here is, is now we found something that, you know, will seem to work better. And so the next thought is, is, well, why wasn't that engineered that way in the first place?
We would have loved to work going forward. The initial time, initial fix was estimated to be seventeen thousand dollars with a two-week delay. That, we thought that was the best way to approach it. That is our, still our preferred way to fill that void and provide the best stability for the bridge. Hurley encountered, Hurley asked for their sub to get back to finish drilling or to come, one day of drilling, you know, a few hours of drilling. They encountered numerous delays to get that contractor back, and they still can't get that contractor on site. That's when we said, enough's enough. Let's find another. And when they came, when Hurley came back with an estimate of fifty-two thousand, we decided that's unreasonable. Timeframe has been unreasonable. Let's look at another solution.
Is nobody else that can do this, that can drill or whatever?
According to the contractor, no. They can't find another sub to do that.
And I'll be honest with you, fellas, that's where my frustration comes in. I, I walk that path with my family, probably three times a week. We go around that corner there, and I watch it sit, doing nothing. And I just, the whole impression I get is that, you know, you guys or the subcontractors have better things to do. And it's like there's no sense of urgency on this project, and you're telling me that your subcontractors are busy and they have other things better to do, apparently. And this is really what, what, my keister.
I understand. You're, you're more than, and Don Reba is there. He's there every day. Every day the contractor's working, Don is on site. That's a federal requirement with the money that's being spent with a federal grant. The inspector has to be on site. Our frustration is their contract is with Illinois DOT. It's not with the city. It's not with HLR. We can observe and advise. We can't order them to do things. Our, our reach and control is limited because their contract is based, or is with Illinois DOT. We can advise fixes. We can advise repairs, alternate methods. The contractor is responsible for getting the equipment, getting the manpower, and the subs assembled and getting there on time. Our original contract has a completion date and liquidated damages after that point. That's really our only recourse against the contractor at this point.
So if I hear this right, you're telling me IDOT is, has a lot of control over this, and so if they're dragging their feet, there's not a lot you can do about it.
I'd say two weeks.
I'm Doug Paulus. I'm also with HLR, and I'm senior project manager for the construction department. As Steve had said, this contract was led by IDOT. And with that, I don't want to say they make the rules, but they make the rules. Eighty percent of the money comes from them. We had, when, Don had, when we had issues, had contacted our representative from IDOT saying, hey, can, can we ask the contractor to get another subcontractor? Well, to get the subcontractor, it has to go through, they have to submit to IDOT, has to go through an approval process, which can be anywhere three to four weeks. We were looking at two weeks to have the original subcontractor come back. They didn't come back. So then we asked our representative, you know, what can we do to force this issue? And we were directed, there really isn't anything we can do. It's, as the, as the engineers, we don't have the authority to go out and say, hey, you know what? You have to fire this, this subcontractor and get another one. Or we can't say, you know what, you have to work ten hours a day, seven days a week. You know, that's, is outside of our, our scope of what we can, we have the authority to do.
All right, so let me just understand this, and now our staff have questions here for you too. Are we all aware that this is an IDOT holdup or has been?
We are aware that this is an IDOT-controlled project, and there's been a lot of debate on whether A, could get them here to explain their processes and procedures as a large government entity? And B, to be frankly transparent, we're not sure how productive it would be for future grant opportunities of projects being funded at eighty percent that we want to necessarily be calling legislators and be bothering everyone about IDOT processes and procedures that probably aren't going to control or aren't going to change over our project. But it is a frustrating situation. It's kind of a, one thing leads to another. There was even an incident on this project where, you know, we had to do some of our own water main work that also had a delay. So I think everyone's had a, a piece of this, of this problem. And, you know, unfortunately, the way forward is, is working together and hopefully getting this done before November.
When, has the District One engineer been enlightened about this? Or the District One boss been enlightened about this? I mean, is this a problem? I mean, that's who our state reps would call and get him out here or her. And, and instead of going through intermediaries, let's go to the boss.
At this point, we've only made contact with the, the Faust engineer for this area, who's the administrator for IDOT for this particular project.
Well, right now it's warm, and in two months, in November, it's going to be cold. And then, then work's going to stop, and they're going, they're going to say, we're going to finish it in the, in the spring. So while everybody's pointing fingers at each other, let's get, if it's an IDOT thing, let's get the District One engineer out here and explain it. We, he's been out, we've had them out here on, on projects a lot less than this.
And, and you know, and I get, and I think I sensed it in your voice a little bit then, there's a delicate balance. I mean, we're getting a lot out of IDOT in this twenty-seventeen State Street reconstruction where they're willing to put a lot of dough down. Stuff that we've had no idea how we were going to fix for years to come, but it looks like it's on the table now. And that had a lot to do with political, sort of pressure coming from our representatives. And so there is. It's the delicate balance of how much pressure do you put on before it all falls apart? So I, I sense that in your voice a little bit. But it doesn't mean we have to be jags about it. I mean, we can still call and ask and say, hey, look, IDOT, you know, what can we do that's really affecting traffic? We don't necessarily have to go in there with guns blazing, but enough to know that this is a serious problem. And so it's just, you know, looking to play it right, but it sounds like maybe a little, some phone calls through representation is perhaps something that can help with this, as opposed to you guys feeling like, I go over there and it goes nowhere. So, you know, let us know when we can help on things like that. It's important to understand that.
I just want to give you an example. The only reason I mention this is because back in nineteen ninety-six, we had a shoe store that IDOT took away their parking spot. By the time it was over, the district engineer was out looking at the parking spot. So if they can come out for one parking spot, I'm sure they can come out for a bridge.
No, that's, that's, we just have to now play the, the, the finesse of politics and see how, what's, what's the right pressure and where to put the pressure on and how to put the pressure. And that's fine. I just need to know I need to do that, okay? So it's important that.
Is there, is there a need to that now, or are we?
Yeah, we passed it. Like, if I go and make a call now, maybe I'm just making it more difficult. I'd like to solve the problem that we all work for. So if there's that phone call and, you know, putting some of the representation on that, IDOT, if that's necessary at this point, great. If you guys like, will pass that, then that's fine too. We just need to have a fire in somebody's butt to get this done. I guess I don't want this having to get delayed because of the winter. I do not want to see that.
Nor do we.
I saw the emails I'm getting. They're not very nice.
Why don't we start, maybe the mayor and I, maybe reaching out to the District One engineer before we go to legislative route and see what kind of action we can.
Yeah, well, I mean, I read the report too, and, and everyone is aware that we've had a lot of rain and that caused some delays. But I found that the equipment, there was a piece of equipment that broke. And construction was stopped for, what, weeks? Because they couldn't go out and get another piece of equipment. They had to wait for this thing to be repaired. I mean, I found, I really found that to be ridiculous.
Early on, I think at all, it's like, look, guys, if you're not a big enough company to handle this job, get the road, you know? I don't need a guy with one drill bit. So, yeah, it, it was upsetting, right?
Early on, we did have some issues with, well, not we, they had some issues with their equipment. Like you said, they lost probably three weeks due to equipment malfunctions. They, they broke this. They blew the transmission up on one of their equipment pieces. And they're a small company, I guess, but they're just starting out to try and get the foot in the door as far as being certified for all this work. It's not going very well, but they're trying to get their foot in the door. And apparently, they've rented most of their equipment, but they only have one piece full-time, and they rent the rest of it. And when you blow it up.
Find a new line of work. They need to find a new line of work.
I agree. I agree.
Working out for them.
Just three weeks with us and IDOT because they couldn't find equipment.
Right, yeah, I mean, that just seemed.
It is very frustrating.
And with IDOT's low bidding process, that's, you, you are, you are held by that contractor when you accept that bid on a low bid. They have liquidated damages at the end of the completion date, but we have limited control over what the contract does day to day. They give us a schedule, and Don, in day-to-day contact, he works through that schedule and identifies solutions when problems come up, but we really have, I won't say our hands are tied, other than advising and pushing and, and, and moving on this contractor, there's, there's not a lot we can do. Because they, each time, we'd say, okay, it's two weeks. Now it's two weeks more, and it's two weeks more. And so it's frustrating for us, and I know you guys take the brunt of it from your citizens, and we're here to be accountable for you. We want to, you know, let us have it because we are there. You hired us. You trusted us to go out and advise and observe this, this contract.
I, I, I want you guys to ask some specific question.
Well, I guess my question is, are you imposing liquidated damages?
Well, I guess my question is, are you imposing liquidated damages?
What the contractor will do, and he's in the process of doing it, and this is part of IDOT's process, is they're going to submit for an extension of time with the revised schedule. And they will try to outline the reasons why they should be entitled to this extension of time. We will look through it and we will make a recommendation. But as we had said earlier, IDOT holds the contract. We cannot go in and say, you know what, we want seventy-one days of liquidated damages. We can make the recommendation to IDOT, but they will make the final decision as what that will be.
And then we work outward, sidewalks and pavements and everything else. So it's really hard to go other places. They have done the wall for the bike path connection and a few other things. But we really are limited once the bridge is, until the bridge is in place, we're limited as to what else they could really constructively keep in progress.
All right, well, fellas, I need this to be a priority in your lives. So what you need from us, like Ben and I can reach out where we can in the appropriate ways and, you know.
Do you need to rent bullwhips or something for you?
Look, I get, like I said, I get, stuff happens. I've worked as a laborer in the oil fields, you know, when I was a kid. And man, I get it. I've seen a lot of weird stuff happen that you don't expect. So I understand it. But we just need to be on it.
I was in heavy equipment though, when something broke. We had another piece on a truck. It wasn't that hard.
Agreed. I agree. I agree.
So, you know, we had a piece down at the Sun Times. They broke it on purpose. We had three on standby just for when they did it. Just to keep them running. So, all right.
Thank you for coming and taking the beating.
Yeah, took your beatings.
I'll be referring all my emails to you guys.
I'll leave my card. Amy has them, so. Thank you. We'll keep your breasts.
You know, Amy, one thing I wanted to comment about is, you know, you just went through that list of all the projects that are going on and, you know, things that are delayed and things that are starting. And, you know, that's all part of the process. You know, one thing I wanted to, you know, confirm was as we move forward, you know, one of the reasons that we changed the fiscal year to January to January is that instead of letting these contracts, seeking contracts out in, you know, June, we'll be able to do it in February. And just your feelings on is that's going to help us with scheduling, getting projects started earlier in the year as opposed to the end of the construction season. And your thoughts also? We have a larger pool of contractors to choose from. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, it's my feeling that the change of the fiscal year will not only allow us to get projects done in a more timely basis and not be rushed to paving in November, but it'll also get us better prices on contracts. When you let a project in April instead of July, all the contractors out there are filling up their schedules for the summer and they're hungry for work. And they're more willing to get the city better prices on stuff. So I think we'll get better prices on our contracts. I think that we will probably get a bigger pool of contractors to bid on our jobs. Probably maybe ten, fifteen percent of the contractors won't bid on a job in July because they already have too much work. So yes, I do think it will be a huge benefit to the city to move the fiscal year.
That's good. And I know the council members know this, this is why we did it. I just, you know, or one of the reasons. But I just kind of wanted to put it back out there for, you know, people who are here and those watching. I mean, we're trying to be proactive on some of these things. And one of the things we did was change the fiscal year so that we're not ending up racing against the winter for things like this. So, that's good. Thank you.
And if I can make another comment about the bridge project and our upcoming Second Street Bridge project that was both funded by federal HBP funds. Another thing that I want to have you put in the back of your minds as you call and speak to the people from IDOT about this project is, HBP funds, when I first learned of HBP funds was probably 2007, when I went to a funding seminar at IDOT. And what I was told when I went to the funding seminar was that, you know, local municipalities who had bridges that were in a certain condition rating were eligible to apply for HBP funding for engineering, for the reconstruction of bridges. Not for construction, but for engineering. Because there was a limited amount of HBP funds and bridge projects are generally very expensive. So the chance of a municipality getting funding for construction is very slim. We have been incredibly lucky to be able to not only get the engineering paid for by eighty percent for these HBP funds, but also the construction of the bridge. Now, we have the Second Street Bridge funded for engineering. And, you know, if we're really lucky, then the construction of that will be funded too, because they are such small projects. But, you know, just keep in the back of your mind when you're talking to IDOT about, you know, the problems associated with these projects, that IDOT does not have to approve funding for construction for these projects. And we were very lucky to get that.
Well, I hear your concern. You're worried I'm going to go in there and blow up the world. That's why I have been an even-tempered man. It's to counter these outbursts of mine, so.
But one thing is though, is that these project lists, et cetera, and the budget that they come out of are all approved by politicians. And the politicians in the party that approves them, well, we're represented by politicians in that party. And so it's not like we're, that we don't have a say. And the reason that, again, I bring back when the district engineer came out, the reason it came out is because the state senator called up leadership and he was out. So if they come in and they start to slight us on projects, et cetera, that's, it's not something that we have to always go hand in hand.
Well, that's exactly right. It just, the bottom line is, I understand it. I'm a little hot under the collar right now. But it's, you know, I understand going into a meeting and talking to people like human beings and finding solutions. So I wouldn't worry about it. But we just didn't know where to, we're trying to figure out where to put the pressure on. Whose butt to put a fire under and how hot to make it. So this is what this is about, so.
District engineer.
Mayor and I will be reaching out to them. Who will be the yin and the yang? And Amy, you know, one other thing, just kudos to Amy. She came in to, Ben and I the other day, all giddy about, I mean, she's always just absolutely fantastic at finding money and funding outside of our local tax base. She's the queen of it. So thank you again for all that you do. And it also kind of leads me to one other thing too, as, you know, as we change the fiscal year to help with construction projects and timing and the ability to have a wider pool. You know, one other thing that Ben and I have been talking about, you know, and is how do we, how do we manage projects in the future? I mean, you know, we're about to do an unprecedented capital improvement, capital improvement program over the next six years and making sure that we, you have the help you need to make sure that we're managing these projects so that we have somebody on them, on staff. There's only so many things you can do. You're busy designing projects, finding funding. You're doing a zillion things, Amy, and you're doing them well. So we want to make sure that we find the appropriate, whether it's a consultant or another staff member, probably consultant, but we'll talk about this. Finding people that can manage these projects all around the city to make sure that they're on timelines and when there's a stuff, we can figure out what we need to do in an expedited way, so. Thank you again. All right, what else we got to be done? Was there one other thing? Joe?
More for drill.
Joe's been waiting patiently.
All right, Mayor, City Council, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution fourteen dash zero seven seven, which would authorize a city administrator and staff to enter into an agreement with Strand and Associates regarding Task Order fourteen dash thirteen in regards to the pre-treatment program for an estimated fee of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. A little background, under Special Condition nineteen of our current NPDS permit for the Division Street Treatment Plant, the city was required to develop a pre-treatment program pursuant to our NPDS permit number IL zero zero two nine six one one. In the attached letter dated July twenty-ninth, twenty-fourteen, we got the response back from the US EPA in regards to the industrial user survey we did, in which we had to survey a hundred percent of our industry in town. That did come back, that the city block court would have to, that we had one categorical industrial user and several other industrial users. This means the city will be required by the US EPA to develop and submit an improvable pre-treatment program. Also in your packet is the attachment with the city's required response to the US EPA dated eight twenty-one fourteen, as well as the task order for Phase Two submitted by Strand and Associates.
All right, any questions, concerns, break?
Just a comment that ongoing, this is about a twenty-seven thousand dollar, you know, process and procedure that'll be developed. And ongoing costs each year will be much less. You know, it'll still have to be done each year, but it'll run about ten thousand dollars a year on future budgets. But we've got to get it started first and develop it.
Again, the original intent by doing the industrial user survey was to prove that we did not have substantial industry in which we wouldn't have to implement this and we wouldn't have this cost every year. It did not work that way. It came back. But even to proceed further with a pre-treatment program, we still would have had to survey a hundred percent of our industry in town. I don't know if there's any more questions. Dan Small from Strand is here to answer any questions, if there's any questions beyond that also.
Anyone, anyone? Okay, good. Put it on consent agenda, if that's fine, if appropriate. All right, thanks Joe. All right, any new business?
I do.
All right, right on.
I want to address the articles that have been going on in the Lockport legend regarding our allowing some variances and some not. I requested to find out when the zoning ordinance, which is different than a variance, which is different than a hardship, that it was the zoning ordinance which would not allow the church to extend the front of their building. It wasn't a hardship if they didn't, because they're no worse off. And it was just going to be a little, like a little Narmthex area or something. But the zoning ordinance was passed in nineteen ninety-seven. And it stated that the buildings had to be set back twenty feet and there couldn't be a variance given if the building next to it was at twenty feet and they were at twenty feet. It also said that if it's a corner lot, which is the church was, it had to be twenty feet. And it was stated for visibility reasons. So this was not, this was something that was passed in nineteen ninety-seven. It's been on the books for all this time. And all the Planning and Zoning Commission did was stick to the rules. That's what was passed. Now, when Deerfield Construction came to us, they were asking for a hardship allowance because they're putting up a building in the back to take care of supplies that they have sitting outside in a counter-skelter manner. And I hope that maybe they'd be able to move it. But it would be a hardship because it would be an additional financial burden for them to follow the code, to make a building that no one's going to see. It's just a storage building. So I don't think your comparisons are fair. And I also don't think that the article that you wrote about Deerfield, which was kind of in a news article, it's fine when you write an editorial and give your opinion. But you put your opinion into that article. And I didn't feel that that was proper.
May I very briefly address that? Okay, that's fine. I did not put my opinion into that news article. If you go back and reread it, all I did was report questions raised by one of your fellow aldermen. And I think some of the information that you presented tonight was never presented at either of the, on either of the issues that came up. So I can only report what was said at the time.
But it was said, it was said at the Planning Commission. It was in their minutes that I read. Where they said that this was an ordinance that was passed, but they didn't know when or why. But they knew it was an ordinance. So it was mentioned then. I mentioned it again another time when I spoke and said that we were told that there was an ordinance, you know, the zoning ordinance that said that this had to be done. And yet, you still seem to think that there's, you know, you're comparing, in my mind, apples and oranges because these are two separate issues.
And they are. You know, one of the things that, and you're right, Pete. You know, one of the things that I'm talking to Pam a little bit about that maybe we can explore is, you know, some of the things that are tricky in the old part of town is it's, it's like London, right? It's not a right-angled street in the whole place. It's just a hodgepodge, but that's its charm, right? And it's the same with our downtown. I mean, it's, there's a lot of, you know, houses built over the course of a hundred and fifty years. There's all different shapes and sizes. And some churches are right on a curb and some aren't. And as opposed to us taking control away from, say for instance, the Planning Commission, although in this case it wouldn't have made a difference because it's an ordinance. An ordinance is an ordinance. It's not a variance. It's but, you know, if we take control so that we can have, and this is, I think, where Dennis's point was, like, our council doesn't have any authority to make any changes. It's like, well, in this case, it was an ordinance. But I'm like, I don't even know if I want that kind of control. Because if I have that kind of control, you think we're here late tonight? We're going to be out here talking about everybody's swimming pool or some guy's fence is too high, all the stuff that the Planning Commission takes care of. We're going to be hammering it out forever. And then it truly does become political because then it's like, well, that Joe's my friend and, you know, so I got to make sure. So it is nice when it is a planning commission that can follow rules that are, are, like, these are the rules. We're not being jerks. We're just following the rules. And so that's important. You know, are there ways that, and I talked to Pam briefly about this, we haven't really discussed it in depth yet, but it's like, are there ways about looking at the downtown a little differently? Just because it is unique in its way. And to say like, hey, man, when we do a reconstruction, they got to be twenty-five feet wide. That's the rule, right? It's like, it's going to look silly. Every other street's twenty. So like my street's, I'm going to have this big wide spot and then it goes back narrow again. It's a little bizarre. So, but, you know, maybe this is something we can revisit without taking on the complete burden of the Planning Commission, which is why they're there. So, I don't know, I just kind of wanted to put that out there a little bit. It has been.
And the council could have, I mean, they could have come and presented to us, I believe, a request to change the ordinance because we do have that power. But that was not an issue. And so we, you know, the Planning Commission did their job.
No, it's kind of the way it was presented to us by, you know.
Yeah.
Did anyone, did anyone voice these concerns with Dennis before the meeting today? Was this a surprise?
I can answer that, no.
Yeah, so, you know, just my opinion is, you don't want to play gotcha politics here. I think this is a conversation that should have been had on the side with Dennis. Give him an opportunity to state his case. And if there's something that needs to be brought to the council's attention, I think it could be heard at that time. But I think this is embarrassing for all sides.
This has been brought to the people's attention and which is why I felt.
But it's irresponsible. It's irresponsible. We need to give him an opportunity to prepare his response and defend himself. And doing it like this is inappropriate. Sorry.
I apologize then.
Well, I don't think any apology is necessary. I just, I just wanted to express my side of it. One thing you did mention, the planning and zoning minutes. I actually looked on the city website today in regard to this very issue. And the last planning and zoning minutes on there were from April. So there's no way for me to look at those minutes at this point.
Well, I can send them to you. I still have them.
I would love that.
I see all that stuff.
I did look at the new website.
Thank you very much.
As a side note, I had a cousin that was a state senator. And he used to say, never pick fights with people that buy ink by the barrel.
Yeah, that's a really old one, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really old one, yeah.
All right, everybody. Anything else? Close this? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah.
I'm from Deerfield Construction. Did we pass this?
Oh, you're in the next group.
You're in the next meeting. Five more minutes. We have two different meetings on the same night. It's always confusing. Deerfield is where we shoot the breeze, right? And city council's where we pass them.
And anybody that gets with it.
So, we're up next. All right, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Alderman Vandermeer, seconded by Alderman Paretta, all in favor?
I, I, we need five minutes?
Yes.
Amy, 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 what about Gouger? Did you get the board? Did you tell them about Gouger? Didn't tell them here.
All right, everybody.
Mayor? Anybody can talk about Gouger?
Oh, Gouger. Let me just start the meeting and you can get up and talk about Gouger. He's getting money, he's awesome, yeah.
She is.
All right, we're going to do city council. Can we just do a roll call, Jack, please? Paretta?
Here.
Marianowski?
Here.
Vandermeer?
Here.
Deskin?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
O'Reilly?
Here.
Here.
All right, we're seven present, we have to form. All right, fantastico. Can I get a, a motion to have a consent agenda? Go move.
Second.
I heard voices of Alderman Paretta, seconded by Alderman Turner. Okay. All favor?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda tonight is passage of the regular city council meeting minutes from August 20th, the committee of the whole meeting minutes from August 20th, payroll period ending August 17th, approval of various bills that were presented. Also, number five is PZC case 201411. We've got the PZ case 2014010V. We've got the proposal for professional engineering services for the Hamilton Street parking lot. Authorization to amend chapter 155.24, signage ordinance. Number nine, squad car purchase, resolution 14065. In the canon surplus property, motion to pass resolution 14066. Contribution in lieu of bike path, resolution 14069. And then there's, lastly, we have the resolution 14064. Can I have a motion to pass? Go move. Second. Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Paretta, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a roll call for that one? Want a roll call?
Yeah.
All right, if you feel comfortable, Jack, we'll do a roll call. Roll call, please. Alice wrote it, so I trust her. Paretta?
Yes.
Marianowski?
Yes.
Vandermeer?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
O'Reilly?
Yes.
Capadon?
Yes.
Seven eight. That vote was a huge surprise. All right. Jack, you want to talk about the motion approved?
Sure.
Executive meeting?
I'm seeking a motion to approve executive session minutes from the, August 20th, August 20th meeting, pass out.
Go move.
Second.
Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Marianowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Stan, what do you got?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just seeking to pass a resolution 14074A, appointing an authorized agent for the city of Lockport with the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. This is basically authorizing Maggie, who's already done some training on this, to replace our former finance director, Eric Brown, with processing of IMRF funds. We'll probably bring back another one once the new finance director is selected, but in the interim, we need to make sure we can keep things moving.
Okay. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Vandermeer, seconded by Alderman Marianowski. Is this something we need to vote on or can we just do an aye? You want to know?
Yeah, no, you can just do it all.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
When does our new finance director get here?
Well, we're starting to interview. Jack and Ben have been putting people in, so.
Yeah, we're getting applications, we'll be doing reviews, so we're moving on right away.
All right. Italian, Tim?
Just, this was on the consent agenda, this is the parking agreement, but Assistant Chief Draxler and Dave Draxler and myself will be going to the Kelvin Grove meeting this September to present it to them and we felt that we should present it to them before we pass it to see if they got any comments. So this is just a motion to table until the next meeting.
Move to table. All right. Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Marianowski, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's tabling for the next meeting.
Right. And I'm not asking for an executive session because.
Yeah, you can.
Litigation took a day off. It's a force of habit.
Yeah, that's right. All right, next is Amy, you're up again.
My only item on the agenda tonight is for the 7th and Washington Street reconstruction project recommendation for selection of consultant. We currently have 10 engineering firms providing design services for 12 separate transportation, road, bridge and sidewalk capital improvement projects. HR Green recently completed plans and specifications for the Wheel and Street reconstruction and they are in the process of wrapping up the engineering for the 4th Street reconstruction project, which will be constructed next spring. We recently requested a proposal from them for the design of the 7th and Washington Street reconstruction project and water main replacement that was included in the capital improvement program for next year, 2015. This project will involve the full reconstruction of 7th Street from State to Washington and Washington Street from 5th to 7th and will include water main, curb and gutter, storm sewer and landscape restoration. In order to have the project ready for the 2015 construction, as per the recently approved CIP, we will need to get engineering underway immediately. The proposal from HR Green, including completing the engineering and bid documents for the 7th and Washington Street reconstruction project, is for a not-to-exceed cost of $82,895 with bid documents ready to be let by spring, summer of 2015. Engineering for a reconstruction project of this type is typically 10 to 12% of the construction cost and would include surveying. The most current construction cost estimate for the project is $750,000 with $600,000 for roadway and drainage and $150,000 for water main replacement and service connections. Therefore, the proposed engineering fees are about 11% of the construction estimate for the project. $90,000 was the estimated engineering cost in the CIP. We recommend that the city enter into agreement with HR Green and the amount of $82,895 for the 7th and Washington Street reconstruction project.
I'll make that motion, second. Alderman Turner, seconded by Alderman Deskin. Can I have a roll call, please? Paretta?
Yes.
Marianowski?
Yes.
Vandermeer?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
O'Reilly?
Yes.
Amy? All right, Pam.
The last item is PZC case 2014003TA. It was tax amendments to the city zoning ordinance. This tax amendment proposal is really has multiple components to it. I will touch on the more simpler ones first. First and foremost, staff in the, with the support of the planning commission, we created some new definitions for two particular areas that currently right now had multiple uses as part of it. And so the first definition relates to expanding the definition of tobacco shops. What we found is that with now the new craze of electronic cigarettes, that tobacco shops is currently defined in our ordinance did not address those particular types of uses. And since we do have inquiries about those uses and have one in our current downtown area on 9th Street, we wanted to make sure that any subsequent requests, there is a clear definition in where these particular places could go. Second was a consolidation of all of our secondhand retail stores. For example, we had variety of resale shops, thrift, consignment, non-consignment and pawn, all defined in our ordinance in some form or fashion or at least listed in one or more of the various zoning classifications in our ordinance. So to make it simple, we consolidated the definition into secondhand retail store, which would then include all of those other store types that I've listed. Also too, we modified in, in relation to the secondhand retail store classification because it does include resale shops that sometimes require or have some sort of donation component to it, we wanted to just put in ordinance form conditions that kind of addressed how a donation area would need to be handled if that was in fact tied to a resale shop of some sort. The last item, which is taking a look at the C4 allowable use list. In that list, there's a variety of uses listed that either permitted by right, which means there's no additional zoning action that would be required, or that they were defined as special uses, which means that then they would have to come before planning commission for a recommendation and ultimately to the city council for approval. As staff looked at that list and even at the time when I first got here and we started, Christiane and I started looking at it, we recognized that there were a variety of things going on with that use list, including obsolete uses such as, oh, as telegraph offices. Those have been long gone and so we removed that from the list because we didn't anticipate that there would be any additional ones being requested anytime soon. In addition to that, there were a number of uses, office mostly related, that, you know, a business office, a professional office, they're one in the same. They don't necessarily need to be defined by medical, dental, law. We all know what professional and business offices are all about. In addition to that, we had several terms, bar, taverns, they're all essentially the same. So we wanted to make sure that that use list now is reflective of some consolidated uses as well as like uses instead of duplicating the same type of use, but with different terminology. Lastly, we took a look at some of the uses that in particular may not necessarily be appropriate in a downtown area. We reviewed multiple communities that have downtown areas and what's interesting is they're handled differently across the board. We have some that's specific, like Lockport, that have a specific zoning classification that addresses the downtown area specifically. And then there are some communities that basically use their standard C or B1, B2, B3 districts and, and have a mix of that within their downtown area and maybe throw an overlay district over it, which has more control of the direction and vision for their community. So we did take a look at some of the, you know, nearby and some far away, just to see how they compared. As we moved through the list, one of the items that struck us was a category called agricultural processing and manufacturing uses. Under that category are two different classifications. One, a contractor shop and production and manufacturing for consumption. Those obviously defined as manufacturing uses. If you look at the city's definition for a contractor shop, it really relates to businesses that have large extensive equipment that if they weren't a shop, they would be a yard and that same material would be stored outside. So as we move forward with the C4 zoning district and the direction and the vision that we all hope to see as the downtown continues to get excited and see new and exciting uses, we probably didn't want to see a contractor shop be set up at any point in that vision. Now, based on the proposal on this tax amendment, it has no impact on any of the existing businesses that are currently downtown. Either anyone that may be mistakenly portraying something as a contractor shop, in essence, it's not a contractor shop by the definition in our city's ordinance. In addition, I just want to point out that the city of Lockport currently has a variety of zoning classifications. In each one of those classifications, whether they be the C4, which we are discussing specifically tonight, or the residential, manufacturing or other commercial districts that we have, they all to some extent limit the types of uses. They also define the uses based as permitted by right or special use. So we are not doing anything differently with the C4 district or proposing anything different with the C4 district this evening that isn't already being done in some form or fashion in all zoning classifications here in the city of Lockport as well as in communities across the metropolitan area. In addition to that, I just want to point out that the downtown area is primarily, has a variety of zoning classifications. The main historic area is zoned C4, which is what we're discussing tonight. There's also C2, there's some M1 and there's also residential zoning. If you look at the downtown area as a whole collectively, it's a mix of those types of zoning classification. Lastly, a loan shop, which has also been eliminated from the use of list, is essentially a bank and banks remain and will continue to remain as an acceptable use within the downtown area. And lastly, I just want to just reiterate that any of the uses that currently may have been eliminated or reclassified in the C4 district are somewhere permitted or allowed in the city, whether in the C1, C2 or C3 zoning district. So we are not restricting businesses, we are restricting or identifying appropriate locations for where certain types of businesses would be, which is pretty common, not only in Lockport, but also in the metropolitan area and our neighboring communities. So with that being said, staff is asking that the council pass ordinance number 14027, which is an ordinance amending section 156.003 for definition, permitted uses and additional standards and criteria.
I asked a question.
Well, want to do the motion first?
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Okay.
Okay. Under the agricultural, you have, it says production and manufacture for consumption sale on premises. Wouldn't that be a donut shop or a bakery?
Essentially, I'm not really sure how, how that's defined.
Okay. I'm not either, that's why I'm asking.
It came up at one point where what happens if we want it like some sort of micro brewery or distillery, you know, to come into the city, would that prevent it? And I believe that somewhere in that list, that type of use is referenced or it would be similar and fall under the classification of, of a bar or a tavern or.
Well, what about something like a bakery?
I think.
I mean, I know that that would be something that people would come downtown for. I don't know that anybody's going to open one.
I think the difference, now when you use that example would be whether it's for a wholesale purposes, like, you know, a big manufacturer of a particular item and then distributing it out to a variety of places and.
So for consumption, you don't mean to eat or drink, you just mean for use?
Yes, that would be correct. Yes. Because for example, when you think about repair shops, it, it, you know, you can identify a variety of repair shops and they could range from large scale to small scale. We have a definition for consumer retail, which by that definition, when you look at it, it really applies to such things as, you know, vacuum cleaners being fixed or, you know, TV repair. So it's really the uses, you have to sometimes go back to the definition to get a really true understanding of what particularly, what we might have in our head isn't necessarily how it's defined in our ordinance.
Okay. And what about, like you were talking about contractors and I know we said that Marcio's would not be considered a contractor. So would that be like if somebody wanted to open a window shop or something?
No.
It would go into, you know, just, they don't make the windows there, you know, you'd hurt, you'd go in and look at, you know, something like that or a bath, you know, shop or something.
Based on our definition of contractor shop, it basically, the way it's defined right now, is it. now, is it really would be like, an excavation type of business, something that involves large equipment that, instead of being in stored, stored outside, would be stored inside under that definition. Places like Marcio Tile, or anybody that sells that type of product, they would be considered retail, because their primary component is retail, and yes, they have installers, they have people that help them with, with that type of work, but they're primarily retail, and they would fall under a permitted use.
I like that you're reclassifying and putting all, getting things consolidated. At least it was a long list. That's all.
Any other thoughts, questions? Uh, yeah, I, I've, of course, been courted in a publication, and, but anyway, I wanna say that with the help of Pam, and with the help of Ben, and, and the mayor, I've had several conversations. I've gotta say that Pam is very, very, quite knowledgeable on, on the city, and she's quite knowledgeable on, on planning, et cetera, and she did a good job, and put up with my questioning and stuff, and she's a great person. Ben did the same thing, the mayor did the same thing. And I gotta say that my concerns have been answered. My concerns about the protection of, of businesses that are already existing, my concerns about the, you know, I, I worry about small business, I don't want them, I'm a small government guy, I don't want them harassed by government, I don't want them, you know, I hope that everybody gets a level playing field, I think they will, and, you know, and that they can prosper. We want people to come to Lockport and prosper. And right now, Lockport is a great deal. I mean, we've got buildings in Lockport that are, that are great rents, and if we get the right people, it works. Reason I moved to Lockport, I had a graphics business, just like somebody else I know, and, and we lived in, in the McDonald Building in the downtown, loved it, it was a lot of fun, at a bowling alley, video store, it was a great, great experience. And, and along those notes, along that thought, one thing that was proposed last year that I'd like to propose again, is, is something that other towns are, are using. Lamont is using it, Plainfield, and that's where we, if we have bars, restaurants, et cetera, that we allow outside tables, and, and umbrellas. And the reason for this is, that you can have beautiful buildings, but if people drive by and there's nobody outside, it's kind of like if you go to a restaurant, there's an empty parking lot, nobody goes in, 'cause they think, "Well, nobody likes it." But if you have a, a town where everybody's sitting outside on a sunny day enjoying themselves, people go, "Well, why don't we stop here?" And I think that would do a lot to, to do that, and I think that we can work that in. And on businesses in the downtown, there's a lot of businesses that, I agree, we could probably expand this list on businesses we really don't want in the downtown. And, but I think after my conversations with, with everybody, and they, they did a great, patiently listened, listened to me, and so, I think that I'm gonna vote for this, but I also think that we should consider sidewalk cafes, and really extend that so that people drive through and think, "Wow, Lockport's a great place to stop." And I think, I've gotta hand it to the mayor, too. Not since Mayor Deystrop have we really had a mayor that's been this energetic about getting things rolling. Mayor Deystrop used to go at 100 miles an hour all the time, and, and I, and our present mayor is kind of, not quite at the same speed, but a little more directed to...
He was an echophobe.
Yeah, he was, and a great guy, but, but I think that, I've been to some of the events, and I went in skeptical, and I came out having a, a great time, and I think with that kind of activity in town, we're gonna attract people that come out of town that have money. And that's really what it's about, is that, you know, we want them to start businesses here and become successful. So, that's, that's my piece on this, and thank you. Don't we already allow for outdoor tables?
We do. Yeah, we do, it's, it's defined here in a variety of ways, and so we may end up having
to clean this up even a little bit more.
I think they gotta serve food, don't they?
It's tied into, let's see, I was just...
And while you're looking, Pam, I know one of the issues...
Outdoor area for restaurants, indoor bar, large. Outdoor area for restaurant and a bar, small, which would be like your, your cafe type thing. And then, I believe the section it references actually is the outdoor cafe section.
You know, one, one of the issues we've had is, the sidewalks are so uneven because of the vault issues that we're, we have in the downtown area, and I know the city's working on, with an agreement with IDOT, to do some work there in the downtown and, and take care of some of that vault work, so I think we'll see that develop a little bit more in the future, when you can put some tables and rails out there without any tripping concern, tripping hazards, or things like that. So, I think we're taking steps to make that happen. Although, I do disagree with eliminating telegraph offices, I think, a comeback.
Just getting into that.
Next century, yeah.
And telephone exchanges.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to go to, I think that they did a great job, this is, this is responsible planning organization, there's no way of restricting the business in the city of Lockport. All right, any other thoughts? Really thinks it's a kind word. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I think that's the, the end of it, right? Any open floor comments? Any, any more?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second. Better, Jack? All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, uh...